How you doing, Susan?
Good, how are you?
All right.
Feels like a long time since we had a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it has really been a long time. But I keep banging my knee, nothing changes with this desk, all right. Hey there, Bill. Hi there, Matt.
Hey, how you doing?
Doing all right.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Hello.
Hi.
All right, and we got the we got the transcript going, that's good. Good sunny day, nice temperate evening. This is terrific. Welcome, Kevin, welcome.
Thank you.
Jim, how you doing?
Good, yourself?
All right. Enjoying this temperate evening. All right. Very good. So Jim, you are our co-host. You are up and running.
Kevin, you have been sworn in, correct? Yes, I have.
Signed the book, chock full of open meeting law knowledge.
Took the took the ethics and conflict of interest course.
Fantastic, that's great. There'll be a quiz. Yeah, it being seven o'clock, and I think everybody is signing on. I'd like to call our meeting to order, it's May ninth, meeting of the planning board. And let's do a quick roll call. Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Jim Spalding. Jim Hogan, sorry.
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
And Kevin York, welcome to your first meeting.
Here, thank you.
Fantastic, and myself here, so we have our quorum, and our second item on the agenda is to approve our minutes from April 11th, and so this among the the four of us who are who are present at that meeting, and does anybody have any edits or questions, comments? All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings, what was the date?
April 11th.
April 11th meeting minutes.
Second.
All right. Terrific, all in favor? Matt Lowery.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Jim Hogan.
Yes.
And myself, yes. That's terrific. There you go. The this is terrific, we're gonna, we're gonna start to our public hearing on 197 the hot street in a couple of minutes. Just and also welcome to Susan Alt, our planning board clerk, and Aaron Kokinda, economic and community development director for the town, you're you're here, and there was one snafu by my by my omission on our agenda. We did not add the recurring item on the agenda, missing items not anticipated by the chair, so I hope that's an acceptable omission and something we can still add have on the agenda since that's it's a standard part of our order of business. We will get, we'll get back to the end. The so wanting to adhere to our start time. Think we've got everybody here, right? I saw Jesse Schumer, Andrew Dorni, are there other representatives of 197 Nahat? You're with us?
Yes, David Jordan, the civil engineer with Greenman Peterson.
Terrific, okay. All right, thank you, David. I think we can formally open the public hearing on the proposed subdivision definitive plan for 197 the hot street and like to invite Jesse Schumer and Mr. Dorni to and and Mr. Jordan as as necessary to get this public hearing started.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Aaron, I'm sorry, I don't think you can technically start till exactly seven oh five unless my that's what we have on our so we just want to be mindful of folks that
Yeah, all right. Okay, well. Right, I've got seven oh five now.
Yeah, you're good.
Bertino at seven oh five.
Very good, all right, very terrific. So again, we are opening the public hearing on 197 the hot street. And let's, I'd like to invite Attorney Schumer and Andrew Dorni and any other representatives to introduce the site and walk us through the documentation for everyone else that's on the call. And just as way of introduction, we did receive and review a preliminary plan of this earlier in the year. But really happy to have this formal formal review and discussion of 197, so how would you guys like to start?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I'll just make a few brief remarks, just to to orient the members and orient Mr. York, who wasn't wasn't on the board at the time of the preliminary subdivision plan review, and then I'll hand it over to David to run through the definitive plan. And if Andrew, Mr. Dorni has any anything he wanted to add that David and I don't hit, we'll invite him to to speak freely, of course.
Sounds good, great.
So thank you all members, and we appreciate your time tonight, it's nice to see everyone again. We were last before you back in December of 2022 with the preliminary plan submission. The property in question is located at 197 Haunt Street, just to to remind the members of the parcel in question is approximately 2.65 acres in land area. And my clients, the Dornies, have owned that property. Well, they've owned 197 since 2010, and they purchased the adjacent parcel, which is designated as 201 Haunt Street. They purchased that in February of 2021. What they're proposing to do, and the definitive subdivision plan before the board is the is the plan of record for this project. They're proposing to split a portion of the property into a separate buildable house lot in order to create room for one additional house on this on this area, there's no intent to further expand this parcel or to to grant access rights to any adjacent parcels, it's simply to create one additional lot. The the parcel in question is located in the SR zoning district, which requires 12,000 square feet of land area, as I mentioned, we have approximately 2.65, so well in excess of the minimum lot area. The limiting factor for development of this parcel is frontage. The existing parcel has less than the 100 required feet of frontage. So the proposal before the members tonight is to create a new subdivision road, which would create frontage, zoning compliant frontage for both parcels, the existing parcel bringing that lot into conformity with the zoning requirements, and also zoning compliant frontage for the proposed new lot. The the plan itself is fairly straightforward with one, I would say, one caveat or asterisk, which is the one requested waiver of the planning board's regulations, which is the requested waiver to construct the entirety of the of the width of the subdivision road. What we are proposing to do is construct only a limited accessway to serve essentially as a private driveway for the two lots, because as I mentioned before, there's no intent to expand this parcel and or this accessway into a full road that would be needed for access to additional parcels, it's it's simply to access the two lots, one of which already has access via the existing driveway, which will be approximately in the same location as the proposed subdivision road. So we felt that the the layout and the proposal to to not construct the entirety of a full width subdivision road would be more environmentally conscious and more cost effective and really just serve the purpose that Mr. Dorni and his family have much, much better than would be constructing a full width subdivision road with a cul-de-sac. So what we proposed is a is a, as I said, essentially a private driveway. It would have a turnaround for fire vehicles, there's stormwater management planned for the proposed access road as it's constructed. And that that one waiver of the planning board's rules is the one, the sole waiver that we're requesting from your rules. The additional waiver that's noted in the application package has to do with the zoning bylaw, and and before the the members say we're not the Board of Appeals, that specific provision of the of the zoning bylaw does permit the planning board, not the Board of Appeals, to grant a waiver from from what's a requirement pertaining to the specifics of the lot shape as it relates to the to the to the area of the parcel in question. And so David will be able to run through that and and how the parcel meets the qualifications for the waiver that the planning board is permitted to grant. But with that, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'd like to turn it over to David for him to run through the specifics of the plan, but before I do, if the members have any questions for me or or any questions about the the proposal generally, perhaps now's the time, or otherwise we can go to David.
Sure, does anybody have any initial questions? All right. So yeah. Turn it over to David.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for the record. My name is David Jordan, engineer in Lancer Vale with Greenman Peterson in Salem, New Hampshire. If I can share my screen, I can walk you through the plans that we've submitted. And I think the host needs to enable screenshot.
I believe you should be all set.
You. Excellent, thank you. Okay, so hopefully you're seeing this on your on your screens now. So as Attorney Schumer said, this is a subdivision of the property at 197 Nahat Street. We're just just west of Kathleen Drive on the Haunt Street. The property itself, again, as Attorney Schumer said, we're about 2.6 acres in size altogether. So Nahat Street is on the right side of the page here. And this kind of long, somewhat narrow lot is the Dorni property. As as Attorney Schumer said, it's actually made up of two parcels. The original parcel, which had about 50 feet of frontage on Nahat Street and extended to the rear at a width of about 50 feet until it opened up in the back, opened up in the back. That's the original property that the Dornies purchased. And then a few years ago, following a form a subdivision of a lot at the corner of Kathleen Drive in the Haunt Street, we created this additional parcel that the Dornies have since acquired and combined with their property, resulting in the 2.65 acre land that we're looking to subdivide. So this plan here essentially shows what we're looking to do. So again, as Attorney Schumer stated, we're looking to subdivide this property by creating a right of way coming in off of Nahat Street. And that provides frontage for both the new proposed lot on that is going to face Nahat Street. And then the existing remainder property on which will be the existing Dorni residents. And again, that provides the a proper frontage for their property as well. So after this subdivision, the Dorni property will be about 1.97 acres inside. And again, have frontage on this new on this new right of way. The proposed lot upon which a house would be built in the future is about 14,457 square feet. Again, in excess of requirement in the SR district, which is 12,000 square feet of land area. Going to the next page here. So this provides a little more clarity on what Attorney Schumer was describing. And that is that within this new right of way that we're we are creating in lieu of a full town standard roadway, we are, we have submitted a waiver to construct a common driveway that would be shared by both of these houses. So a a single driveway coming in from Nahat Street at this location here, which is essentially the same location as the existing Dorni driveway, it's just a little bit further to the west. Again, both lots would access the property, their properties from the Haunt Street here. The Dorni residents, the driveway would just continue straight to the back. And for the new house lot, the driveway would tee off and provide access to a garage and the dwelling on that lot right there. Then what this configuration also does in terms of the driveways is it does provide a means for the fire department to turn around emergency equipment. So this essentially this T configuration here allows for that turnaround movement for emergency vehicles. Again, the under this proposal, no changes are proposed to the Dorni residents. At this point, you know, that structure will stay as is. Whether something in the future happens, additional, that remains to be seen. But again, nothing under this current proposal relates any changes or additions to that to that dwelling there. The dwelling that we show on this new proposed lot is again, a possible dwelling footprint. The end user and buyer of this lot would, you know, determine the actual footprint to be built. But what we've established here is a building envelope by virtue of the building setbacks that this lot is subject to. And we're also, you know, with this plan set, identifying how stormwater will be managed, not only from this new house lot, but also from the driveway itself. So in summary, basically, what we are looking to do is any house, any new house that's constructed on this lot, this new lot, the runoff from the roof will be recharged by having downspouts connected to underground infiltration chambers. And we've done some test pits out on site to verify soil conditions. So the roof runoff will be recharged. As far as the shared driveway, we're proposing a crushed stone filter strip along the western edge of the driveway. The driveway is going to be pitched towards that west side, so that as runoff comes down the driveway, it hits this filter strip trench. So basically, another means for capturing and infiltrating the stormwater that's coming off of the off of this shared driveway. In conjunction with this plan set that we've submitted to this board, we've also submitted a full drainage computations demonstrating that with this proposal, there'll be no increase in runoff from this property. So by collecting and infiltrating the stormwater from these impervious surfaces, again, we have no increase in stormwater runoff from this from this proposal. Next page.
Mr. Jordan, if I may, just a question as you're going through the presentation.
Absolutely.
As of right now, the current proposal in front of us, does this envision the construction of the infiltration trench as well as the underground chambers at this time, or are components of those subject to the sale of the subdivided property and subsequent design and construction of proposed single family home that is on the screen right now?
Yes, so so good question, so yes. The plan would be that the infiltration chambers for the house would be constructed, would be, you know, put in at the time the home is constructed. Because the number of infiltration chambers required is related to the you know, square footage of the house that's ultimately built there. So I could I guess I wouldn't envision if this subdivision is ultimately approved by this board, a condition such that, you know, it's it's a condition of approval that any house constructed on that lot implement, you know, a stormwater management system substantially in compliance to what we show in these plans here. The the shared driveway, again, once and I guess I have to confirm this with Mr. Dorni, but at such time as this property is sold and this driveway needs to be constructed, or the the new shared driveway constructed in lieu of the existing driveway that's there today, that filter strip along the edge of that driver would be put in at that time, regardless of whether this house is constructed at the same time or not.
So if you don't mind, and I'm not sure which member of the development team would be the person person answers, but just as a general question, what is envisioned, you know, if if this plan is approved by the by the planning board, what level of construction is envisioned at this time, or what would be deferred until the commencement of construction associated with that single family home, just so we're just word note, we're reviewing in terms of phasing, you know, as currently constituted to the proposed end condition, what we're actually reviewing?
I think that question's probably for for Andrew, if he has an idea of of what his timeline is, Andrew?
Yeah, so our driveway is in pretty horrible shape. There's a lot of like settlement to it and where we have four kids and just taking the barrels down to the down to the street to Nahat Street from my house. We may do that driveway before we sell that lot. So if that drainage section to the west is required, then that's something that we could certainly do.
But really, really, the redevelopment or the reconstruction of the driveway is the only thing that would be done in advance of the balance of the construction work that would occur?
I I think that's right, but though, you know, the conditions that the board applies to to the subdivision, that could be something that's handled in in the conditions in terms of the sequencing of the driveway and the sequencing of the construction of any any necessary stormwater controls for it. So I would say that that's something could be handled there.
No, understood, just trying to understand what the current, the baseline proposal was at this time.
Nope, absolutely. Just running through a couple of last things here. We did submit a profile of the proposed shared driveway. At the preliminary subdivision stage, we received some comments from the town engineer regarding making sure that we maintain ADA compliance with the crosswalk that is in the hot street as it crosses the end of this driveway. And this profile shows the intent to to certainly do that. What I guess I'd like to do is jump back to maybe this issue here. It's happened here. I've lost my ability to change the pages here for some reason. We stop sharing for a moment and see if I can reshare. All right, well, I will I try to figure this out. As Attorney Schumer stated, in addition to the waiver request for the construction of a a shared driveway in lieu of a full subdivision road, there is a requirement under zoning for lot shape, and it's called a coefficient of regularity. And it's a function of the area of a lot in relation to the perimeter of the lot. And basically sorry, I'm just trying to get this plan back on the screen and doesn't want to do that. So we found that for the residual parcel, so the parcel, the 1.97 acre parcel that would be remaining with the Dorni residents, that parcel does not satisfy the coefficient of regularity requirement. Once we noticed that under the proposed condition, we actually checked it under the existing condition, and it doesn't meet it today either. And part of the reason is, and again, I apologize, for some reason, all of a sudden, I can't get this plan back up on the screen. Plan back up on the screen. Um, the shape.
Would it be helpful if one of us share the plan on your behalf?
Yeah, if somebody could do that, that'd be great. I'm just trying to.
I I have it, David, if you if you'd like, Mr. Trump, that's per permissible.
Sure.
Everybody able to see that?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. David, just let me know where you want me, which sheet you want me to go to.
You're you're right on it. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, so the fact that this property is kind of a long, narrow, narrow parcel. Um, and further, we have this little piece of property that extends down to Kathleen Drive. Um, what happens is you pick up a lot of. Perimeter without gaining a whole lot of lot area, so that's what throws that coefficient of regularity off. So like I said, it does not meet it today under the existing parcel conditions. Um, nor will it meet it after this subdivision. The new proposed lot. Does meet the coefficient of regularity, it meets all. Uh, frontage area setback, everything, everything is met on that proposed property. Um, we just have. No way of meeting it with the residual lot area. Um, just by virtue of the shape of the property that we're stuck with here. Um, and as Attorney Schumer stated. While this is a reg- a requirement under the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does allow the planning board uh to to waive that condition when they deem it appropriate. Um. I think with that, I will conclude my presentation. I didn't know, I don't know if uh if Andrew has anything else to to uh add, um. But if not, both myself, Andrew and Attorney Schumer are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, David. Um, just, uh. Do you know what the current coefficient of regularity is?
I. Do, if you bear with me one minute, um. It was, I I don't have the actual number, it was somewhere. Around, I thought, point five four, point five five, point five six. The proposed. Lot will have a coefficient of regularity of point five six. Um.
I think this is it, David. Yeah.
Yeah. Me, so going up. Yeah, so look, yeah, lot A, the residual parcel. After sub- after subdivision will have a coefficient of regularity of point five six. Um. Before. And the requirement is point six five. Um, before subdivision, I thought it was very similar to the point five six. I could probably find that if you give me a a few moments. Um, and I can, you know, if there's other questions in the meantime, I can see if I can find that.
Um, uh, Andrew, uh, Mr. Dorni or Attorney Schumer, anything else you'd care to add? Um, at this point.
Nothing further from me, Mr. Chair, we're we're um open to questions, uh, if any of the members have any.
Yeah, um, yeah, no, so let's, uh, um, I'd like to open it up to the the rest of the board, um. I mean, I I've got, uh, for for me, um, some just site plan clarification, um. The Dorney lot, the new lot A, um, will extend from Nahat Street. Um, all the way. Where's north? All the way south to this very end. Um, and include the most of the proposed uh shared driveway correct?
Uh, yes, so the the entirety of the shared driveway is located on parcel A, so I'll just all outline it here with my cursor. Goes down here. All the way around to the back. And then back out.
Including, um. The part of the T that would go. Uh, into the the house, right? Because the, no, the part of the T will be. Um. Yeah, okay.
So there's there's the two turnarounds here.
Yeah.
One on lot B, one on lot A. And then the 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 reason for that is that allows the the fire vehicles to come out and and back into that. Whether they're coming into to this house or the order this house.
Understood, yeah, okay. And I think another earlier comment that we had received was. Um, uh, the back of of the lot, you know, from. From the existing, uh. Uh, Dorney House, um, all the way south really is undevelopable and, uh, by and large wetland, so. Um, so that's. Uh.
That is correct.
Yeah. We they've flagged the wetlands back here with these uh notations here, so yeah, as as you mentioned. Essentially, anything past this point is is undevelopable.
Right, okay. Um, I would just say for the record, right, um, we received comments from uh the fire department. Uh, the conservation department and, um. Uh, public works, um. So, um. The. Um. Uh, conservation department made mention that, uh, they did not have any, uh, review require requirement because there was no work proposed. In any of the right, uh. Within the regulated area, um, so although, um. There was a a comment about location of some trees, so, um, we'll we'll get to that later. Um. The. The comment from the the fire department, um. Uh, noted, um, making the uh this driveway a public street so that the. Each lo- each lot could be renumbered, uh, to avoid any future confusion with not Nahat Street. Um, and that a hydrant be installed and, um. Uh, I. Um. That, um, they, I don't know, I'd I'd like a little more, uh. Clarity on the. The degree to which the. Uh, the shared driveway, uh, will accommodate, uh, fire apparatus. And. Um, we are still waiting on a a couple other. Uh, departments to, uh, give their, uh, their notations, um. Um. I want to, I I think, um, myself and the other board members are going to have it. A number of si- similar questions, so I I'm happy to, uh, pass the mic along, um, if others want. To get started.
Well, Theo.
Sure.
I could, yeah, um, thanks for the presentation. Went by the site and yes, I agree, Mr. Dorni, the driveway and everything. Obviously, this would be a big improvement, um, and I appreciate the amount of work into the plans. Um, with the information that we received, I think this afternoon. From the town engineer.
Yep.
The DPW response. Um, I was just going through that right before the meeting, so I don't have a full handle on it. But it seems like a lot of it and, um, anybody else on the board or, um. Um, uh, at the meeting, please correct me if I'm wrong. But it seems like a lot of the comments. From the town engineer and DPW, um. Were when the new resident, the single family resident would be built, the residents. Meaning for water, for sewage, for a lot of, um, the strain and the stress on Nahon Street was brought to attention through this letter. I just want to ask if the rest of the board members had a chance to review this yet.
I did, and I had a number of questions as it relates to if this was a proposed system they built at this time.
Mm-hmm.
There's some elements related, for example, the. Trench drain. Or they say the uh the infiltration trench.
Infiltration, yeah.
Whether or not the slope of it was going to actually infiltrate, or if it was just going to. Convey water on an hot street via that mechanism, given that it represents about fifteen. Percent of the area catch basin, I had some questions as early as the performance of that. So comments more technical nature in terms of the design of that, but. Um, and then I think I didn't catch, but I think that the DPW's comments related to. The location of bedrock and of groundwater in relation to this the stormwater tanks. The bottom of those where those infiltrations are, make me question the effectiveness of those over the long term. Um. That being said, if those are elements that need to be, for lack of a better term, determined. When we get to. The second phase of this where the building is. Designed, you know, the actual buildings, we have the actual loads. Um, it'd be interesting understanding of other people in the the planning board feel as if that's a conversation best left for, um. For after the subdivision, but kind of a condition is to review the actual. Final stormwater management plan in order to make sure it meets the relevant regs. Because the the report we have here indicates. Uh, I would call it the minimus reduction, more of a status quo of stormwater draining onto the hot.
And Jim, that's that's close to what I was like really starting to get my head around, um, especially the underground infiltration systems. Where is it working as a single system or are they separate systems? Do they, if only half of the system is? Created, and this was more of what I was thinking, looking at the plans and looking at the engineering. Report from BPW, wondering if. How much of that is going to be built when the road is done or none of it is going to be done until the new, uh, the proposed? Single family. Will will be built. So that's, um. I guess that's just a big question, and I I think in the presentation it kind of answered that where the um, the the single, the proposed single family is not being built now. So the question, um, would be. Is any of the underground infiltration system being done during the? Um, regrading and creation of the the new road?
It would be the infiltration tr- trench directly flooding the road, correct?
Right, but is that, it's just that trench, it's.
Yes, that's that's the stormwater. Management practice for the driveway. The shared driveway.
And that that would be the only, uh, stormwater management for. New lot A.
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I I I'll comment on this too, um. I know you're, there's no net increase out there, but. But currently, that entire driveway is draining out into the hot street as it is. So, yeah, I get that you're not doing a net increase, but you're also. You know. Adding to this lot, so you should be, it should be a little bit more than just no net increase, you should actually be trying to control and. Slow down some of the water that's clearly there, that's already running down out in the street. Um, the utility plan doesn't, it shows a a catch basin out there, I. Can't tell if there's up anything or it flows, so I don't know what happens. Right now with the water going down there. Um. And I I I would guess that your infiltration trench is just going to pick up the additional. Bit of pavement for the roadway, so. I I think that's something a little bit more than an infiltration trench, um, might be required out there. Um. I I have. Serious doubts on maintenance of this, um, getting plowed up. Um, we get into, you know, snow removal and. Taking care of that later, but, um. Most of these, they're high, uh, maintenance issue things, and if if they're not controlled, they're just. Left to rot and you, like, uh, the town's, uh. DPW's memo said, it's just a conveyance system to bring the water to the bottom of the street anyways, so. Uh, I'd like to see what. Uh, something a little bit more robust. And actually controlling that water and not just moving it to the bottom of the hill where it's going to go in this.
I think my concern is that with these infiltration trenches, with how often they get clogged. You know, it it's it's a concern as it relates to, especially if you have high pitches to them in their catch basin, they're they're. What's feeding them? Um, I think that's where, I I don't know if Matt, if I'm speaking. Out of turn, but that's kind of what when I was looking at, that was the nature of my concern as it relates to that element as well.
Yep, that was one of them, um, the. I guess the whole comment started with with, did we look at the DPW's? Um. List of, uh, items, I briefly looked at it. Um. Play the truth, you're adding one house out here. Uh, contributing to a new water line for the hot street is a little. Um, pushing it a little bit. It's not like you're. You're adding that much more load, uh, an A and R plan out here, but you add a house and the town would have no say in it, so. I don't know if I'm I'm buying that portion of, uh. You know, you gotta contribute to the water line out there, so I'll just throw that out there.
Just for the record, Mr. Chairman, um, we have not seen any of these comments yet, at least I have not seen them.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we just received them, or I received them at like four twenty this afternoon, so. Um, I sent it out two weeks ago and had to do reminders, and I know they're pretty busy right now, so I will make sure I get them to you uh uh after this meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I'll just have some comments once the board is done with their initial comments for this plan.
Um.
If you would, Mr. Chair, um, I had a couple of comments that I wanted to to voice. Um, I I don't know if the development team has received the the comments from the fire department, but. Um, you know, based on my understanding of the the sequence for this project, the fact that that proposed. Shared basically driveway, I think makes a lot of sense. I don't necessarily. I'm not in support of a proposal to pave the entirety of the proposed new street. Or, you know, proposed paper street, um, for impervious surfaces, et cetera, et cetera, other valid reasons. Um, so one of the comments from the fire is fire department was to have this be a name street. And to potentially have a fire hydrant servicing it. Um, I personally, in my review of this. Being essentially a shared driveway. I think that the turnaround, I think it may be, maybe a little bit more robust might be. Appropriate, but I think substantially you're there. Um, so I would be in support of not rename, not having this be a name street that the town would have to assume control of. Not requiring the addition of a fire hydrant, because I don't think, I think it's a. It's essentially a a very similar level of. Fire department, you know, coverage that's required, you know, the Dorney property in the back, I think is more problematic from a fire perspective. That's an existing condition, but the new building towards the front of the property think is more easily serviceable. From the existing hydrants which are located. You know, not really that far, in my opinion, um, so. Obviously, the issue of understanding what other members of the board say, but that was, when I read that, I kind of felt that's kind of where I landed in my review of that. That feedback from town staff.
Yeah, um, I would say I'm I'm, uh, I really welcome those comments. Um, I wasn't sure to what extent the fire department really was saying. Pave the whole cul-de-sac, but, uh, but that was confusing. I think the shared driveway does make a lot of sense myself. Um. Where, um, where are the hydrants, the existing hydrants?
Um, the existing hydrants are, apologies, go for it.
David, are you able to point out on the plan where the hydrants are?
I'm looking at, uh, the copy of the plan printed that I'm looking at. I'm just, I'm not seeing it at the moment.
There is, there's one at the corner of Melvin Street. Only, I I happened to bike by it tonight on the way back from field, my daughter had, um, a lacrosse game, so I'm like, oh, let me check it out. Yeah, the hydrants on the corner of Melvin, so just.
Okay.
Yeah, just, um, west of where we're looking here.
Yeah.
I think that's the closest one.
Okay.
I believe that the closest one actually may be the one on the corner of Valley. So there's. Hydrants on both in, you know, both, we're both T streets T to Nahat.
Yep.
Okay, alright. Alright, um. These may all be, uh, things that, um, right, that we certainly want to follow up with the fire department and, um. Particularly, you know, street numbering or things like that, um, seem.
Yeah. Definitely, as as David mentioned, we we unfortunately haven't seen these comment letters.
Definitely, a- as, as David mentioned, we, we unfortunately haven't seen these comment letters, but what I would say in my experience, it would be a little unusual for a, a road like this to be dedicated as a public way. I don't think we necessarily have a problem with that, but I, I think typically this would remain a private way, subject to covenants with the town. Uh, so we'll, we'll work with the fire department and Bill Renault and, and DPW to, to make sure that their concerns are, are addressed, and if there is a need for another, another hydrant closer to the site, we can certainly work with the fire department to make sure that that, that's provided for.
Um, hey, excuse me, Mr. Chair, a couple of comments.
Thank you, Matt, please.
Uh, so, first of all, the, the waivers that you're requesting, they should go on, on the plan themselves, so when they're recorded um, everything's together. Um, I'm not a fan of separate sheets, because going through it later, no one's gonna know what waivers were requested, so we could have that. Um. Your intention is to make this private way exclusive uh, use for only lots A and B, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, so there'll be some restrictions that uh, no uh, access from other lots uh or frontage will be granted to any other lot, and utilities only servicing these two lots.
That's correct.
Alright, um. Uh, and with a lot of these type of subdivisions that we've done, but going forward, there'll be no further subdivision of this lot, no division, no A and Rs, so no splitting off little parcels for others, so you'd be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Alright, so that would be a condition that I would like to see. Um. The
That, excuse me for interrupting, would you like to, to have no further subdivision endorsed on the plan itself?
Um, either deed restriction, probably a deed restriction would be better than putting on the plan, because um, I'd rather see it actually in normal, you know, spelled out right on the deed, so either in the decision or something uh, words to the effect that there'll be no further subdivision.
Okay.
Um, the utilities servicing the existing house, uh, I noticed that the manholes are all filled with debris, um, it, it, I assume the sewer service is working there. Um, but what's your plan to are you gonna upgrade or do anything with these utilities for that back parcel? Because I, I do envision at some point that that house may be reconstructed. And I would hate to have this roadway ripped up again, just to install new services, so are they gonna be addressed during this phase, or what's the plan?
We can certainly talk with uh, Mr. Dorney and
Uh, David, can I just uh, add something?
Yep.
Um, so we had our water line replaced within the last two years. And then we had the, I had the drain line scoped, and that was all plastic PVC. And then the gas line was in the last ten years, so everything's fairly new. Um, just in relation to other other areas of town.
Alright, well, on, on the existing additions plan, the, the two uh, looks like two manholes in the existing roadway, or the label was filled with debris, so either um they're not active manholes, or I'm not sure what's going on, but that may not have been, you know, look at that and see if they are actual manholes or not.
Yeah, so, um, so when I had the, it was one twenty plumbing and heating, I had them come over and just scope the line, because I was curious myself. And um, those caps are just access for the drains. Um, so basically, like nowadays, you see like the small ones, they just use the larger ones. So if you take those manhole covers off, it's dirt, but then inside of that, it's like a smaller cleanout for the drain line.
Okay, so is it an actual manhole, or is it just like a road box over a cleanout?
Yeah, exactly, it's a, it's a large manhole cover over a smaller cleanout.
Yeah.
Alright, so um and do you know the depth of this line? I didn't sort of, or the profile, you have that on there?
Not for the existing sewer, so obviously what Mr. Dorney just described our surveyors didn't understand what was going on there, so they did not open up the cleanout that's inside those manholes to, to measure down to the depth of the sewer, and we could certainly do that.
Okay.
They, um, I have a video from one twenty eight too, I can send to whoever would like to see that.
So, I, I guess one of my, and this goes back to the phasing of the driveway and building of the house. So if the driveway is reconstructed, the house is not built. Um, during construction of the house, you're gonna have to bring in some good sized equipment, you're gonna need to get uh concrete truck either up there, you're gonna need to pump it up there. Um. I, I guess my concern is, if you repave the driveway this year and build the house next year equipment going up there may damage that, so that's something you may want to look at. Uh, again, it's gonna be all, obviously all new, but again, I hate to, you know, duplicate efforts again, if, if there's driveway going in and you're gonna build it correctly, then you gotta rip it up to fix things, so I think in, in an entirety install, so you can look at and make sure that it's, it's set going forward. Uh, I assume I didn't see what's, uh, is the water line is going up there, but um, obviously with discussion with the fire departments, um and you already know our, most of our views on you know, building an entire roadway that I don't think we're all in favor of, the fire department may have other requests that may need strengthening of that line, so um, that should all be looked at, at, during this phase. Um. Alright, uh, I know you, you're using, um you're saying that one of those, the turnaround at the top, within the cul-de-sac is gonna be used for fire equipment uh, and emergency vehicles. Um, but currently, that's being used as, as parking, correct? At least from speaking, so will that not be continued to be used for private parking, or is that gonna be restricted parking? Uh, how are you gonna handle that?
So what we're showing in the plan here, you know, I don't know, um you, if, uh, Jesse, you can point to it, the, the little, the um rectangular area um, in front of the Dorney residence. That's where we had designated, you know, vehicles to park, which would keep the drive aisle um, that leads up to the house free for an emergency vehicle to pull in there. Likewise, with the um, proposed dwelling, um, in front of the garage doors, there's space for you know, two or three more cars without blocking the turnaround uh, that's behind it. Uh, so that was, that was the scheme that we had proposed uh, to provide emergency access.
Alright, I, I understand what, what you're proposing, but you know, I'm, I'm looking at the the aerial images right now, and there are, in the aerial images, cars parked there, so I, I'm just concerned that again, you're adding another house up there. You know how many cars end up in houses nowadays, quite a few, so they end up parking all over the place, so um. I just don't want you to represent that this is gonna be a turnaround and, and be available and, you know, cars parked there all the time, so let's just say I'm just skeptical that that's gonna be available for use as a turnaround for emergency vehicles, so that's all. Um. I got a couple more items, uh, let's see, so this new house is gonna have a, the dress of uh, Nahat Street, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Um, and but you're gonna treat the Nahat Street side as basically side yard, correct?
That, yes, that, that's, I would say prospectively the plan, the, the house, the, the new house on the lot be here. It hasn't been designed yet, but that's, that's probably likely. You, you would either have the, the front door of the house here, or, or, or facing Nahat Street, I, I probably wouldn't make sense to have it facing this direction.
No.
Okay, well, one of my concerns with a lot of these smaller infill lots is that the, the side yard, side yard, it used to be a front yard, and there would be some consistency driving down the hot street. Suddenly, it's a side yard, and people put up a fence right on the back sidewalk, and you basically close off um, the street, and basically change the character of the street. Um, you can see that now if you drive down uh to the Montrose School Lane, that, that used to be a school, it used to be open to the street. Now it's a road, the two houses on the end put up big white vinyl fences, so it's basically wall block, it almost looks like, you know, a, a private wall block community. I'm not a big fan of that, so um, I, and, and I have driven out there, recently I see that you're proposing to put some arbivites up there. I'm fine with that, as long as they don't block the access, but um, I would also be looking for some kind of restriction of putting a fence too close to Nahat Street, so whether it be a setback of a certain distance or not, something to, to maintain the character, existing character out there. Um. I would be looking for something like that, so. Um. And then, um, again, the, the maintenance of the driveway, I assume that's gonna be shared to, to owners. Um, I have concerns, again, if you build the driveway first, and then the new house goes in uh, making sure it's, it's restored to its original shape, same with if the house in the back gets rebuilt um at some point in the future, and the driver gets destroyed, that again, it gets uh, put back in its, its original, original shape, so I'm not sure if you're proposing some kind of I hate to say homeowner association or something to make sure that this road, that this driveway gets maintained, but I want to make sure that, you know, going forward. Um, we don't improve it, and then a couple years later, it gets ripped apart, and it never gets fixed again, so that's one of my concerns. Um, and then again, I had mentioned earlier, snow plowing and removal, obviously this is gonna be the homeowner's responsibility. Um. But I do want you to make sure you point out that at no point should you be plowing s- snow into, into the roadway. Um, I just point this out because it happens all the time. Um, this is a subdivision that we're approving, and we'd hate to come back in a couple of years, people complaining that snow is getting pushed out in the street, uh, if we allow this, so um, that should be a condition that no pushing snow up into Nahat Street, and the sidewalks need to be maintained as they should by Whitefield Co. anyways. Um. I guess, sorry to keep going, a couple more things, uh, the limited work lines should be on this plan. So we know exactly what's gonna be disturbed. Um, I know you've got a, a silk sock out there, but um or a saw, a straw waddle, but it doesn't really limit where the work's gonna go. Uh, you say you're gonna maintain the trees, do you have a plan for tree protection? Uh, I know you're putting the water line between the two trees, so um, I want to see some kind of plan to make sure, you know. If you, if you're gonna maintain the trees, I want to make sure they're actually maintained, and they don't, uh, come down later, so some protection for that. And uh I guess the, the last thing is, then building the house, are you are you designing this so you would sell off the lot, or are you doing this to build the house in, in tandem? What's, what's the, you know, what's the thinking on how this is gonna be done? I go pretty much back to Jim's comments. Uh, are you, are you building a house to sell, or are you building a lot to sell off to someone else?
Right, I guess, uh, so my intention would be just to sell the lot, not to actually build the house.
Okay, uh, in, in that case, we need to have, you know, a little bit more robust conditions on exactly what's gonna be done out there, because someone else is buying it, a lot of times they don't even look at, you know conditions that the planning board has done, and they're gonna have to do whatever they want, so um, you're gonna have to beef this up a little bit and make sure that if your intention is to save the trees, they will be saved, and they will be protected. No one putting stockpiles up along them, uh, parking cars on them, and things like that, so uh, if that's what you plan to do, that needs to be done, so. Uh, and at this point, that's, I think all I have at this point, so thank you. Uh, again, I'm, just to be clear, I'm, I'm fully in support of, of a plan like this, there's no reason to build an entire roadway, we're basically adding a house out there. Um, this isn't rocket science, you shouldn't have to over-engineer this, but there are some things that we need to address and make sure they get done, so thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, the, all, all points well taken, we, at this point in the process, we haven't discussed the legal mechanism for how to make sure that all these, these site plan aspects are, are maintained and, 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 and properly uh, enforced, but uh, that's something that I can discuss with Mr. Dorney, and um, and we can, we can have a, a plan for that by the next time we're, we're in front of you. Uh, it would probably be some kind of a homeowners association or something like that, um, but we, we just haven't gotten that far, but we'll have an answer for you next time on all those points.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I echo basically almost everything Matt just said, I, I had a number of the same points. Uh, tree, and I think reviewing the documentation from our December meeting, the tree protection was one, an, an item that came up. So I think everything that Matt said is a hundred percent correct. I do appreciate the proposal for the two additional trees. I do have some questions as it relates to the sighting of the one that is farther away from Nahat Street, and the proximity of it to the infiltration tank, under the underground storage tank. Uh, you, I don't know if some of the comments in terms of the experiences, the team with the infiltration tanks are best suited till the next time we meet, uh, as it relates to, once you have the TPW letter, and can comment to some of those things on the more technical aspects, but um, I think just kind of understanding, you know, what the, how robust we think that system is gonna be. And to Matt's point, you know, the timeline of once some of those elements go in, be, you know, trying to understand, you know, some of those conditions that we may or may not have to uh, impose on this, in terms of trying to make sure we have uh, stormwater we all feel comfortable with um, in the immediate term. And so, with that being said, I think that's, that's the, all the, the comments I had, but I want to echo what Matt also said in terms of, in general, I think this, this is a really solid concept. And I think that it makes a lot of sense to take an infill development like this and convert it into another home. Uh, I, I think there's no, especially looking at the existing condition of that lot, I think this would represent a material improvement, and I, I think it's it's a good thing that uh, we're in this process right now.
Thank you. Just uh, to clarify, that was the question about the location of the tree, are we, are you, were you referring to this tree here in relation to the stormwater management structure?
That is correct, uh, just understanding whether or not we think there's a perceived risk of that tree uh, disturbing the infiltration tank, uh, frankly, to a lesser degree, the, also the, the other tree, you know, and its proximity to the uh, the underground piping, you know, and you could, again going down the rabbit hole, you can make the same comment about the existing tree, making sure in terms of your tree protection plan, you're not gonna be disturbing it as you build that wall, the new building so close to, to the existing tree, so tree, you know, the kind of the tree protection plan, whether or not the two locations are excited, the ones, which I believe were added to address a screening question. Which I appreciate, but just trying to understand how, how, you know, the likelihood of success of some of these plantings are to actually survive and or not impact your, your proposed drainage solution.
Sure, I, I certainly won't attempt to answer the question about the proximity of the, the new tree to the drainage structure. With, with respect to tree protection, typically what a project like this would do is is establish a, a zone of protection, more or less coinciding with the drip line of the tree. And then also an area closer to the, the trunk of the tree with some kind of a snow fence to make sure that you know, trucks don't, don't park on the, on the roots, and equipment isn't stored on the roots. Really just to protect from, from compaction, from that sort of thing uh, in, in the critical root zone here, which just, as I mentioned, typically coincides more or less with the, the drip line of the tree, so, but we can provide some additional details on that.
Yeah, well, while I acknowledge that. Yeah, well, while I acknowledge that, it's also you're going to be excavating, you know. Subject will change, right? But the way this is drawn right now, you're also excavating. Very close in terms of the drip line, so the potential impact of the root ball et cetera. I mean, I'm sure you guys can figure it out, right? But there's nothing on these plans that really address that in a meaningful manner.
Understood, and we we can supplement the plans with with the protocols that will be followed. David, did you have any initial thoughts, not to put you on the spot about the 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 new tree?
No, I mean, we can take a look at it, judge all the comments from the engineer and. And DPW. And we'll also defer to our our landscape group. Uh in in as far as providing guidance to us and as far as. You know, what they what they feel as far as the spread of the root for the trees that they've specified here. Um but there certainly is flexibility to, if need necessary. Um relocate one of the or both of those trees slightly to get a little more separation from the infiltration chambers.
Very good discussion. Uh if there aren't any other comments from board members, I would like. Uh to invite uh uh the butters who are. Uh joining this meeting uh uh for their opportunities. Uh to speak to the plan um and. I'm happy for folks to raise their hands uh when you when you do. You know, please identify yourself and uh your street number and uh happy to. Uh hear your initial questions or comments. Sure, Mr. Or Ms. Bu- Bu- San.
Bushan, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, can you turn on your camera?
Yeah, absolutely. Give me one second. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, and um.
So, yep.
Where do you live?
So I live in three Kathleen Drive.
Okay.
My name is Bushan Kulkarani. So I have two questions. One is, of course, with respect to the infiltration tank or trenches, as what we are calling. Uh maybe my my non-technical language out here, but what I see is that the one is on the backside of the house. Which kind of faces to the. Uh Kathleen Drive Homes fan kind of boundary, I mean, as such. So my question slash concern is when a new house will come there, of course, with respect to the roof water and whatever. Which is going on to the Kathleen Drive. What exactly is the understanding that that water will correctly get caught in this infiltration tank and it will not get into the lots? Or onto the houses, backyards on the Kathleen Drive?
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, I could answer that question.
Sure, please.
So the intent there is that the new house will have gutters and downspouts, so gutters on the roof edge. Connected to downspouts. That bring that water coming off the roof. Underground into these infiltration chambers. Which are basically. Uh plastic chambers. Um set in stone. Uh surrounded by stone that allows the runoff to enter the chambers. Then soak into the ground. Beneath the surface of the ground. Uh so there would be no stormwater runoff directed to the back of your property. Or any other properties along Kathleen Drive.
So does that increases the water table as such? With respect to the whole area of the house, the water coming on that roof, going through those tanks. And getting down into the ground as such, does that increase? The water table, should I be concerned with respect to? My basement getting the water filtration or the water or. For that matter, dampness with the water now coming and getting. From that whole area coming in that in that infiltration tanks and soaking back that area of the land.
No, I necessarily understand the question, but the answer to that is no. Um there there is no concern. We're not increasing the water table. Really what we're doing. Is replicating what happens out there today, meaning right now. There is no house on that property. So when the rain hits the land. A lot of that water is soaking right into the ground. Um so what we're trying to do is replicate what's happening there today. Meaning. Uh without the infiltration trench, any runoff that comes off of the roof. Would tend to run overland. Uh towards whichever direction it goes. I don't know if it goes into your property or towards the high street, but regardless. Any water that would come off the roof, if it wasn't collected like we proposed to. Would run across the land and end up somewhere else. So what again, what we're trying to do is replicate what happens there today, which is a lot of that water soaks into the ground naturally. We're providing a means by which that can happen after this uh house is constructed. Um so no, there would be no change in the water table. We're actually. Uh trying to maintain the water table that's there currently.
Okay, I I certainly do not myself understand this particular mechanism. Again, I was thinking that as to if all the water from the roof is going into one section of that infiltration and then it is getting soaked. But maybe you are right, you you have understood that in general. Uh my second question is not necessarily to Chris to Kathleen Drive, but what I heard in this. Presentation was that the new road, which is being proposed, is a part of Lot B. Is that correct? That. The 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 new payment as well as the circle. At the end, is that a part of Lot E or Lot B?
I can answer that one, Mr. Chair. Um so technically, the new road is is not part of Lot A or Lot B. It's carved off. As a subdivision road that has created new, not 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 a part of either parcel.
Okay, and is that the reason why that can be shared by the homeowners on? The existing property as well as proposed new property?
It would be, it would be able to be shared. It would be by private agreement between the between the owners of the two parcels. And and typically for a subdivision like this, there would include covenants that are granted to the town to allow the town to access the road. Uh for fire access and and maintenance and and things like that, but. There is, I I know that there has been some thought about the the road becoming a public way and and there may be some some disagreement about that. So I think that 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 question of whether it becomes public or private is something that that remains to be determined at this point. Our preference would. Would be that it's private so that the town doesn't have to undertake the. The responsibility for maintaining the road and plowing it and things like that.
Okay, and going back to my first question as such, just as supplemental, right? Will there be any elevation required on the land? Again, my main concern slash question is with respect to the water as to. We will be sharing the kind of boundaries as well as my backyard and the nuances backyard will be. Sharing the boundary as to with the new construction coming in and the possible elevation. Elevation, I'm concerned with respect to what kind of how much water. Will I be expecting to come towards my backyard? I understand the first point with respect to the water coming from the roof, getting. Caught into the infiltration tank as such, but what about the overall construction and new house coming in? Right now it's a flat land, everything is coming in and going down. But with the new construction, possibly with the small elevation, wouldn't that create a little more water flow towards? Three Kathleen Drive, five Kathleen Drive, as well as the the one on my right, which is the Nahat Street Street, uh Nahat Street House?
Looking at the at the plans and the contours. For the most part, this lot actually pitches towards Nahat Street. I I don't think much is going to end, be going into the backs of. Any of the yards along Kathleen Drive. Uh because again, everything is pitched towards Nahat Street.
Wi- wi- will the new construction make any changes in that elevation?
It will not substantially change the direction of water flow, no.
Okay. And I certainly am a little concerned on that part still, again, as in. I understand your. Your extensive work with respect to. The understanding of the elevation, but with the new construction, of course, comes the unknowns. And I will be. Pretty worried considering the 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 width of my backyard, which is not a lot. And the new proposed lots. Is also pretty close, so. The the house on the five Kathleen as well as three Kathleen and this new proposed house. Are. Significantly closer to each other. I do understand that it meets the town. Regulation and expectations, but in in a sense it is very close. And with the new construction coming in, I certainly am a little concerned with respect to water flow coming into my backyard.
No, your concerns are certainly noted. Thank you.
Mr. Bushan, could I ask you a question? Are are you having issues with water now with your house?
Uh to be really frank, I bought the house just in December, so. Uh but when I was speaking to my neighbor, uh I believe Danny is there online, he can certainly. Explain some of the water concerns he had when my house was getting constructed.
Okay. Uh this might sound like a silly question. Do you have gutters on your house or?
I do not.
Yeah, I was looking at the street view and and saw that the house was constructed without gutters, which. Is. Odd to me, so but, all right. We've done something, you know, water flow is something we always look at and make sure it's not contributing.
Could I just uh add one thing? Hi, Bushan, nice to meet you, nice to meet you virtually, um. I'm Andrew, as you can tell, um yeah, so I think Bushan obviously brings up a important point and um if you look at my house towards his house. His house sits considerably higher than mine, so unless, and this might be a better conversation for, you know, the owner of that lot. But I think what he's saying is um like the elevation as it is now is it pitches from his lawn into that. Lot that we're talking about now, and as long as that doesn't change. Um then I I don't see why there would be a water issue going to any of the neighbors' yards, three or five. But um but probably a better conversation for, you know, the. The buyer of that lot.
Uh we really appreciate uh the comment and I, you know, it certainly um we have a lot more discussion about drainage and 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 the site, so.
Can I add to that as well?
Sure.
Yeah, so I I'm I'm Danny, I I'm at two oh one Nahat and uh. Just to add to what Bushan was saying, I think uh the concern was that as they were building the property, they were bringing truckloads of soil and and dirt to to. Regrate and 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 create the elevation. So when that happened. Even though we had, you know, the town engineer had, you know, uh developed these plans, we still had a great deal of flooding. Uh fortunately, it happened before the um. The final inspection, so we had called the town engineer to let them know, you know. Whatever design that you guys had set uh put in place isn't working. All the water is flooding around this, I don't know, like the stone pit that they created. And um and it was just flooding into my property, so after speaking with the town engineer, they had to. Make it, you know, extend it, put bigger stones in, make it deeper, all that kind of stuff. Um so I guess the concern that Bushan might be having is that. Although that property is might be lower now, I don't know how they how construction works, how they choose how to grade anything, but. To just to create Bushan's property, yeah, I from the time I was here, I I purchased in August of last year. Um I've watched maybe ten ginormous truckloads come in of just soil, so that same thing might be happening on that side, then I have no idea what's happening with the water. Uh but yeah, just to add to what they were saying.
Yeah, um. Yeah, really helpful, so uh thank thank you both, um. J C C, and thank you. You've also raised your hand, um. Hello.
Hi, Julie Cosgrove, two Kathleen Drive. So I just had a couple of quick questions. Um obviously, I did them raise that land that they were talking about um for Bushan House. Uh because the land actually went down, um. So raised it and then there was that flooding issue. It was kind of. Unique. I don't know how or why they would decide to do that. Um obviously, I'm not in construction, um but my question would be more. When the road goes in, is it going down uh Andrew's exist driveway and is it rotting out to the right? Uh widening onto the right side of just existing driveway?
I can, I can answer that. Um it's somewhat following the joinies of this driveway. Um it's just a little bit further to the west, um so if you're standing. At on this on the hot street, looking towards the Dorni house. Um it's a little bit, yes, to the right. Of where it is currently, or will be a little bit to the right of where it is currently.
So edging a little closer to Kathleen on on the on the current site, right?
Yes.
No, the other way around. Sorry, I'm looking at it backwards.
So it's going. Towards downtown, not as the high school.
Correct.
Okay, and then I had a few more points that I wanted to mention. Um obviously, we just had construction on the street for over a year. Um the person that built Bushan's house did not follow many of the rules in town. There was a lot of construction on Sundays, which I did call the town. There was a. Action before seven AM. Um they have damaged the road. Um there was some stuff that the road was fine, but with all heavy trucks, the road has not been done, Kath. Obviously, there was numerous cars, trucks of that. Um where are all of those trucks going to go? Are they absolutely one hundred percent going to go on Dorni's? New road. That you were talking about, about being paved, so nobody will be on Kathy Drive, because we had we had that for over a year.
Correct, there will be no construction traffic. Any any traffic whatsoever on Kathleen Drive.
Okay, and then. As far as following the rules when building does start, who forced them? And the Sunday builds, uh there was more than ten that the gentleman that built Bushan's was there on Sunday working. Unacceptable and before seven AM many times. Nothing was done. I was told they were going to handle it and nothing's done, so as an abutter. I'm not super psyched about the new development. Um since obviously we know it's going to be uh built that built for quite some time. Obviously, the trying stages, which I understand. Um but I mean, the land was purchased as a steal. And got access to the main road, um. And now we need two more houses on that property. I'm not quite sure why.
I can.
There's no more grass.
And I can address some of the the parking issues, because this has been part of our decisions for a few years now, is that we. We specify. You know, that. We basically specify that the contractors will be respectful of the neighborhood out there. We're going to control, we're going to keep control of this subdivision. Of this roadway and and you know. As long as possible. Um one of our concerns is that the driveway is built and the road is is. Sold uh the lot sold off and and sometime later. It's developed, unfortunately, that gets away from us, that's why we. The timing of this is one of our concerns, is how it's going to be built out. But. You know, unfortunately.
Concerned because. You Andrew's not.
Um yeah, once he sells off the lot, then again, it's it's a builder who comes in. And at that point, it's a it's a building department issue, unfortunately, so. Um we will have provisions for. For the driveway, for the road construction. But unfortunately. I don't think we can put a condition that the house get gets constructed simultaneously, we can't do that, so. That's one of the unfortunate things that uh. We can't control is the actual timing of everything.
Okay, I also have one concern, my last concern. Thank you for your time. Sorry, um. Can you see me? Sorry about that. Um I have one concern about the digging, whether it's the road or actually the house foundations or any type of blasting or whatever is necessary. But as in a butter, when um Bushan's house went in, we had a tiny. What do you call it? Uh when you a settling crack, we had a tiny one in my addition that was put on probably twenty-five years ago. And now I have probably a three and a half foot. Um settling crack that I have to handle um that that is at my expense. Um that, you know, is not, I mean, stuff happens, I get that, but I am concerned. When do I fix my settling crack? Before you dig, after you dig, you know, I'm kind of concerned about. Before you dig, after you dig, you know, I'm kind of concerned about what what's gonna happen with some of that digging.
Andrea or Mr. Mr. Jordan, any any sense of soil conditions and to what? If there will be blasting or? A lot of digging.
We did. Do I believe three test pits out there? We had sand and gravel down to six feet. I don't think we encountered ledge in any of those hole. So at this point, we're not anticipating any blasting.
Okay. And I think that's pretty much it for me. Obviously, I'm not a huge fan of the subdivision. As you heard. But obviously, the land was already purchased. And it's already been decided. So as in a butter, I would just hope that people would respect some. Some rules when the building starts happening, whether it's the road. Or whether. You know, because a lot of the big trucks thing on Kathleen Drive House. So I'm just imagining the overflow of large trucks on this all driveway slash road. Heading into a knot as you have no control over that. And then we have to have the overflow of everybody on Kathleen again, which is not ideal at all. So thank you for your time and thank you for listening. I appreciate that.
Yeah, very much appreciate your comments and. Yeah, it's worthwhile food for thought for sure. Any other questions or comments? Danny, you you've got one, and I know we want to come back to Aaron.
Yeah, two two things. One, because. Related to, you know, Mr. Jim Hogan's comment about the trees and the drip lines. I was actually out there, dug about a two foot deep hole for some plantings and. I came across, you know, inch thick root, you know, and this is about thirty feet away from the closest tree. I don't really have many, besides like small boxwood. Boxwood shrubs. I don't really have these ginormous things, so I'm wondering, you know, if the house is too close to the trees for their health. I I love these trees. They're gorgeous. They're like fifty foot tall. I don't know how old they are. I I'd hate for them to be disturbed or anything, you know, for anything to happen to them, but. I, like I said, I was like thirty feet away and I hit roots and I was, I didn't know what I was hitting. I thought I was like, I was trying to dig out like a plastic model or something and then, you know. Trying to get it out, I realized it was just roots. So, yeah, I I don't know if this can be pushed a little bit further away from the tree or if the trees can be transplanted somewhere, but I I would. Just the way it's proposed, I I don't think it would be as good for the trees. Is there anything that could be done about that?
We'll take a look at that along with the the other comments that we received this evening.
Yeah, just just to add to that, I think the the key is to provide a tree protection plan that will specify exactly the measures that will be taken. We, I think we want to save those trees as much as the neighbors do.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, just the way it is. I mean, I see like the corner of the proposed house is like in the tree's drip line. If that's the case, it just couldn't, I don't think it'd work. Second thing I wanted to actually discuss is, so just along what Mr. Matt Lowery was saying about the, you know, now the. Front of the front yard is now becoming the side of the yard that's now on Nahant Street. Just, you know, like along the lines of, you know, not having a fence there, I would hate to see if there's a structure there in the future. If someone puts a, you know, a shed there, because now there'd be a shed and someone's what would be someone's front yard, which would just look terrible for the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't know what rules or like he, I think he mentioned deed restrictions or whatever those things are. I would hope to see something along those lines where no structure is going to be built in the front. Well, his side yard, but essentially what would be a front yard.
We we appreciate that comment. We can we can look at what the what the zoning permits. I'm not sure whether the zoning bylaw even would allow any kind of a shed in the side yard like that. But I think there's there's certainly no intent on on our part to to make way for a an accessory structure and. And I think your comment and Mr. Lowery's comment about about creating the. The streetscape and preserving it and making it a residential feel is is certainly, we agree with that that general outlook, so.
I mean, while I appreciate the way that we can have that, I guess, also put in writing, just because. I, at least from what I've read from the bylaws, they would be allowed to put a shed there as long as the setbacks like seven and a half. Feet or whatever they, those rules were. So, yeah, I. And and like you said, this is gonna be sold off and then someone else would make the decision or the plans and, you know. I guess hopefully this will be done before it gets to that stage.
Okay, we we appreciate that, and what I would say is, I'll I'll talk with Andrew and then come up with a plan for how we're gonna address that and in the. Whether that's in a homeowners association or or whatever legal document is there, make sure that these kind of things are are enforced.
Yeah, I'd like to just add a little bit more to that. I mean, technically, this is a, the side along the Han Street is really a front yard or a corner lot where we have two front yards. So I think there may be some protection there because I don't believe. Under the zoning, that any sheds would be allowed to be in a front yard. Because again, we're really subject to two front yard setbacks with this being a corner lot. You know, both frontage on the Han Street, a little bit of frontage on the Han Street. And then our other frontage along this new right away we are creating.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's some sort of technicality there, I I don't understand it well enough, maybe, but yeah, thank you.
Mr. Bushan, do you still have another question or? You still have your hand up? And you're muted.
Sorry, sorry, I was on mute. Sorry, I was saying that as you, I certainly want to raise my concern also with respect to the settlement again. My house is still a new house, less than a year old. Certainly has not settled, and in fact, is gonna be very close to the new construction. So I certainly carry that concern with respect to my my foundation settlement can have cracks or can get unsettled. With the construction happening literally fifty feet away as such. And. Plus on that, I wanted to raise this point as to the distance between the two houses is gonna be pretty, pretty close. Plus, I have the deck on the back on my backside, so it again, it is getting little more closer. But I want to add an additional point. I have a five hundred gallon underground propane tank. Ahead of that, so that goes very close. To the boundary line or the fences which are gonna be shared between these two houses. So how should we be? Concerned or how should we be taking care of that piece of? Propane tank being so close to the fence and the construction. Because we don't want any mishap happening there with the with the five hundred gallon propane tank out there underground. What what should be the considerations for that aspect?
So I I'll I'll take a stab at answering that, Mr. Chair. So. What happens with a construction site like this, and this would be a condition of the the board's decision with respect to the subdivision? Is that the construction company would have to establish a limit of work, and Mr. Lowery brought that up in his comments and what that's shown on the plan. The limit of work establishes the the area that the construction workers can go in. It'll have erosion controls at the limit of work and it will it will specify a boundary. Typically, it's done with something with a snow fence and a fluorescent orange or something like that. To make sure that the workers aren't crossing that line and it would, that would serve as the as the the mechanism to make sure that you don't have trucks. Going on to your property and and, you know, potentially driving on to the the propane tank that you have in your. In your property and certainly not altering anything on your property. That's that's of course not permitted. So those protections would be in place during the construction phase of this, and as I mentioned, that would be a condition of the board's decision if. The board does vote to approve this subdivision.
So again, as we certainly discussed a lot of conditions, right? Again, as an end. We are talking about the sale of the land and the construction, all these things are gonna come a little later. And we certainly discussed with respect to putting these in deeds, but I want to ask you, Chair, or to the board. What exactly are the mechanisms to get those correctly? Kind of mentioned and abided during the construction, because we literally in the last one and a half hour. We must have talked about at least thirty different conditions which you would like to see during the construction or in construction. But we also mentioned that as to, you know, this is just the sale of the land. Some of those will be under the building department. So what, how can we ensure that? Again, as in, is there something which we can? I first want to understand the process as to how does this happen again, or how does? All these thirty conditions which we may have, again, as I'm pretty sure somebody is taking the notes. How to ensure that that is gonna be taken care during construction, because some of those are really grave concerns.
Sure, it's also a very good question. I think it, and folks can fill in where where I leave things open. You know, the deed restriction is one way to do it, particularly around a certain. Certain set of conditions, but also making sure that, as Mr. Lowery mentioned. Writing them into the plans themselves so that they are fully on record, and so anytime anybody would. Pull up the plan, you would see here, here are the limitations. So that those are, those are two ways to do it, and then so, and then they are clear, simple and known and enforceable, so.
And if if I may, Mr. Chair, you know, the other thing to note is. Some of the protections that we're talking about with respect to the limit of work and not exceeding it, that is a. That's an enforcement mechanism that is typical for all construction projects, you know, in terms of not exceeding where your limit of work should be. Other things such as. You know, work out of typical working business hours, that is in a special services. Enforcement mechanism that's again typical to all construction projects. Some of the other things that are more idiosyncratic to the specific project, to the chairperson's point. There's deed restrictions. That's also honestly one of the reasons why we're having a lot of questions, as or at least the timing and the nature of. This proposed project. You know, I think that we as a board, there's some work that we need to do in terms of defining what we. Think are appropriate set of conditions based on the conversations we've been having tonight and how to best paper that in a manner such that. We ensure that the goals and objectives that the partners have shared as well as us as a board are are papered, you know, to to. At least someone's earlier point, you know, Mr. Dorney is gonna be selling this parcel, so we're talking about a third party that's yet to be identified and making sure that they are a good actor.
And, yeah, I can comment on that, too. Again, we're gonna have written conditions. The the plans are gonna show all this stuff, and what we do is we make sure that they're recorded to the registry of deeds. So everyone has access to these. And during construction. Like, you know, some of us do a lot, we we look at these sites and make sure things are. Are being built correctly. If for some, you know, if this gets built. After we've closed out this this subdivision and the board doesn't have any more say in it. We will go directly to the to the building department. And we'll have them put a stop work on our on it immediately, so. We will be watching this. I believe Andrew is gonna be living there. He's not gonna want to have this, so. He's gonna be looking at that, too. So it's not like. It's gonna be the Wild West out there and someone's gonna do whatever they want. There are there are some mechanisms in there. They're not as easy as if we have control of it during the whole say that we can, you know, say stop work, but. You know, we have some pull with the building department and we can force them to enforce this. Pretty quickly, and they they will shut it down over the weekend if it need be. Especially if we pitch a bid, so there are some protections there that, you know, we can avail them.
Really good to know. Thanks. Thanks a lot, all of you to answer that. My question will be then, right now, this is the approval for the sale of the land. Once that happens and the builder comes in with the or developer comes in with the the construction plan. Does that construction plan also go in front of the public hearing before it convinces?
No, that at that point, it's a it's a building department issue. So no one needs to, you know, the the building inspector. Will look at the plans. They're not open for public comment, so it's it's not like, just like when your house was built. Unfortunately, you know, the neighbors don't have a say on on what happens. It's up to building code and then the. Building department enforcing the code on whoever is building that.
And also to put one finer point on one thing you just said, minor correction. Right now, we're not approving or disapproving the sale of the property. What we are reviewing is the subdivision to create two separate lots. Such that Mr. Dorney could go and sell the second lot that he's no longer gonna be owning. And in addition, the subdivision that's in front of us envisions the establishment of. A roadway that would be separate and a part of the two lots.
Okay, understood. Yeah, then isn't the the the, but again, as in the natural outcome of this, I'm assuming that as to there will be a house which would get constructed. It's gonna be, do we, again, maybe this question goes to the owner or to the attorneys of them. Do we have any idea as to how big this construction would be from the square footage perspective? In the building perspective, I know the lot is there, but. If they have some idea as to how big this house would be with respect to the proposed construction thoughts they are putting.
On the plan, we had shown a potential building footprint. I don't have the square footage of that handy. I'd have to, I'd have to figure that out. But again, it really comes down to the ultimate purchaser of this property and and what they want to build. Obviously, it needs to conform with, you know, building setback requirements.
The the way that position of the house would be. Realistically, I'm gonna have majority of my sunlight view completely blocked. Again, as an, I understand this is not my land, so I'm to a level enjoying the view of somebody at Andrew's expense. I I fully appreciate that, but. But once that construction comes up, unfortunately, it's gonna completely block it and privacy, right? Again, as in, we have the. Swimming pool on of five Kathleen Drive, we have the deck on my side. The privacy, the sunlight, the air, the view, that certainly certainly is gonna be completely lost with this construction. I don't know what exactly considerations can be given for that aspect as such.
But to to try to answer that, I think what what we what we tried to do in terms of privacy and certainly we we understand that that's a concern. With a new house going in where there wasn't one previously, that's the reason for the new proposed trees and we can, you know, we can work to to fine tune that. Because, you know, privacy is important for everyone, including the existing neighbors and the new ones that move into this new house as well as Andrew and his family. Certainly a valid consideration.
I I will highly appreciate that. Again, as in, again, as in, my whole back back side of the house is full of windows. It feels even to think as an odd as to. Every of that window need to be shut down twenty four hours or otherwise it's gonna be completely open with that. Again, I fully understand that, again, as in, this is someone else's land who has the proper, who has the right to construct on it, but it seems really. Sad for me that as to I moved in just six months back and now there is gonna be a house next to me which is gonna invade into my privacy. Thanks. Thanks for your all of answering all my questions. Thank you. Appreciate this.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you raising these concerns and it's very helpful. Mr. Perez.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for having me. I'm sorry that this has been somewhat of a long process. I will not direct more time or airtime to anybody. Basically, I just wanted to take it back.
Mr. Perez, can you, can you find where you live?
Five Kathleen, I. Thank you. I have Mr. Bushan's neighbor, my other colleague just spoke. And as well as. I just want to mention. I just wanna mention, uh, I wanna take you back on my neighbor's consent, uh, concern, sorry. Uh, basically, uh, I have a single family here, uh, that. Somewhat, I, I wanna make sure that I, I moved to the neighborhood that I could maintain my privacy, that I could maintain. A quiet lifestyle in, in, in home and, uh. I do not wanna interfere, uh, with Andrew's projects, uh, I wish him all the best, hopefully he could do what he wants. Uh, but at the same time, I do want him to, uh, uh, kinda understand that we're all saying, hey. Uh, we hear you, we support you, but, uh, we don't wanna be tormented either, um. I experienced the firsthand when the building of Peshaw's house happened, I experienced the traffic going on, water issues. Uh, and I, basically the place that you guys have, uh, which I, which you love for. I just wanna make sure that my property, uh, as well as my neighbors are not impacted by this in a negative way. Where our, uh, houses, evaluations of our, uh, properties would be, uh. Somewhat depleted because of this, so I will ask for, uh, clarification, I will ask for complacency, I mean, I will ask for. Um, somewhat attention to detail as this project is getting along, uh, and also a, a, a strong regard. Of what the neighborhood of Wakefield is and the single families that we have there are before we actually provide concessions on the projects to build.
Thank you, um, that's a, uh. Really, are really important and, uh, that's really, uh, I think a, a big focus, uh, and. Uh, of the public hearings is to fully understand, um, what's, what's being considered and make sure that. Really, uh, really conscientious building and planning, um. Um, is un, is undertaken, so, thank you. I know that, uh, Aaron, you had, um, some other comments you wanted to make.
No, I'll just make it really quick, um, I was just gonna say I'll follow up with, um. Attorney Schumer, Andrew and, um, David, um, um, in regards to. Uh, the information I got from the engineering department. The one thing I did talk to Bill Reno about today was about, um, you know, making sure that we're following. This as a normal definitive subdivision, um, along the lines of kind of like two ninety one Salem Street, which was in front of this board with two members here. I alluded to that earlier in an email I sent to you. Um, just when it comes to, I think, the importance of the, um, storm water management, but I think we've really. Talked about that a lot tonight, so, um, I just wanted to kind of touch upon that again, um, because I know. After talking to Bill, that is a big concern, um, from his office where, you know, where is the storm water? How is this management gonna look like where it would possibly go where this new building, you know? Her new, uh, building's gonna go, our, um, house, so, um, I'll make sure I follow up with this call. After this call with that, those, uh, infer, those memos, um, to you guys, but I just wanted to note that. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
To you, um, I, one more, another comment.
Sure.
I, I just wanted to point out, not that I think this is gonna happen, but somebody technically could. Uh, come in here and do the full cul-de-sac, buy right and. Make almost exactly what you see here and then at that point, take the trees down, do whatever they want, so. We're trying to work here to. To not have that nuclear option go off here, so. This is why we're, you know, we're asking these questions, we're willing to work with this because. We, you know, I have seen this go the other way when someone's really determined to put a roadway in. And it's a large roadway, they do it by right. Um, and basically, if someone comes in with a, a buy right subdivision, we have to move it, so. We don't wanna have to get to that, it will cost them a lot more, but at that point, they'll have two massive houses out here and. It will be a lot worse, so, we're, you know, just, you know. We're, we're trying to work, work a fine line here and make sure that, um. People's rights are, are protected as much as possible yet. Um, we're sensitive to, to the neighborhood, so, I just want, that's one thing I wanna put out there and. I don't wanna throw too much of a flying ointment, but, um, have you, have you considered a, a waiver for the actual width of the right of way? To not go with forty feet to bring it down in order to move this house a little further away from Kathleen Drive? Is that something you have looked at at all, or are you, is that not really getting the works at this point? I don't want you going crazy with engineering and spending too much time, I didn't, I'm just curious if that has been contemplated at all.
No, I don't recall if that was something we looked at, David, did, is that something your, your office took a look at? I think the general idea, Mr. Lowery, was to, to propose a subdivision plan that minimized the amount of waivers. From the board that were requested, but we can take a look at that certainly. Um, there, there's no intent on the part of the Dornies to build a four, forty foot right of way and it certainly seems unnecessary for this application, so. If that's something that you would, you'd like us to look into, we're, we're happy to do that.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't want you to, to go off, I know it could cost money to do all this, but, um. You know, you're, you're asking for a waiver to not build a roadway, another waiver to. Make the right of way a little bit smaller, um, I don't think would be, um. Looked at unfavorably, at least by me, so. Um, I understand how you're trying to like rebuild the driveway in this place and not have too much disturbance out there, but. Uh, after hearing concerns of the neighbors directly abutting on Kathleen that are close. You know, I feel that this could be an option, um. That, you know, if you can look at it and run the numbers really quick and see if it might be worthwhile.
Yeah, we, we can certainly take a quick look at that, absolutely.
All right, that's a very creative, uh, suggestion, thank you, Matt. Um, um, so again, um, we're, yeah, thank everybody for taking, uh. The time and, uh, the attention this evening, um. Uh, we're, uh, we are going to continue this public hearing, um. When would, uh, uh, Andrew, uh, Mr. Schumer, um. When, uh, Mr. Jordan, when, you know, when would you like to come back? Um, how much time do you need, uh, to respond?
I would say we, we should probably take at least a few weeks so we can go through the letters and, uh, perhaps meet with Mr. Uh, Reno and, and. Ms. Kokenda to, to go through all the, the comments from Bill Reno's office. Um, so perhaps we could schedule for, uh, the board's first meeting in June, David, do you think that's appropriate?
Yeah, that was gonna be my suggestion as well.
Okay, um, so that would be June thirteenth.
Uh, okay. That, that day works for me, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, David, is that agreeable?
It is, yes, thank you.
Andrew, are you free that night?
Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, uh, thank you for, uh, your time and, uh, thank you for everyone for, uh, the attention again. All right, see you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, have a, have a good night.
You too.
Uh, the fourth item on our agenda is, uh, uh, updates, uh, regarding MBTA communities, so.
I should be able to keep this relatively brief, uh, the, uh, working group did not convene. Uh, this past week, uh, on the base of, there's some modeling exercises that are currently being undertaken by. Our third-party consultant in conjunction with Aaron and they need a little more time in order to continue to progress the work. We continue to work towards having an August, uh, deliverable for the initial, uh. Multi-family zoning district for distribution to this board and VC the town. But, uh, the next working group session is scheduled for next week. So May the sixteenth and, uh, no, no other action for this, I, for this board to consider at this time.
Terrific, thank you very much and thank you for continuing to do the work and, um. The, uh, yeah, um, there's, there's a lot to consider and a lot to model and a lot to, um. Uh, work through, so that's, that's important. And, um, I'm delighted that we still have some townspeople, uh, town, uh, community members, uh. Hearing the updates, um, because that's, uh, important as well, um. Um, Matt, you're also on the working group, any, any other comments or, uh, anything to share?
Um, nope, not at this point.
Great stuff. Right, um. All right, um, our fifth item, uh, is to welcome our newest, uh, planning board member, Kevin York, um. You won by a landslide, uh, congratulations, uh. And, uh, so, um, so, uh, if you'd like to say anything by way of introduction, um, it's, uh. We, we'd love to hear it, um, and, uh, and we need to consider, uh, uh, new, uh, new chair and vice chair. Um, as part of this item.
Sure, sure, happy to be part of the group, um, lived in Wakefield for coming up on nine years now. Um, have two kids in the school system, one at Doyle, one at Gullbear. And, uh, yeah, just really excited to be a, a part of the board and, and, uh. Sort of get my feet wet and start contributing more.
Yeah, um. Uh, you're, you're, uh, we're delighted that you're here and that you're, uh. Yeah, you're here for a, a good long while, so that's, that's terrific, um, and, uh. Appreciate, uh, your, uh, previous and, uh, potentially continuing involvement with the, the zoning bylaw. Uh, recodification and, um, that's, uh, an area that's, uh, of particular, uh, interest, obviously, for the, the planning board and. Um, really nice welcome, uh, uh, convergence of, of interests, so. Uh, really appreciate, uh, learning, uh, your, your perspectives on that. Uh, and, and going forward as well.
Definitely, definitely.
If I could say something, yeah, sure, Kevin, uh, welcome, um. One thing that, um. I like to point out is that, especially when you're on the board, if you have questions, little concerns, definitely ask them. Because you, if you have a question, someone in the public has the same question too, they might be afraid to, to ask it, so. Um, we're here to educate you and the public, so, um, any questions, if something doesn't look right. You know, if you say, why are you doing it this way, please ask, because sometimes we get caught up that we've always done it this way. Um, we try not to do it, you know, try not to be that way, but. Um, we have a process that we've been doing over years, it can be tweaked, it can be changed. There's better ways to do everything, so if you see something that you have a question on, please ask it, we're not gonna. We'll definitely answer it and at the same time, we're educating the public and support the trial. Sure, it's a welcome.
Absolutely, thank you.
And also like to welcome you, Kevin, um. Matt's been on the board longer than the rest of us and he does have, um, a good background, understanding a lot of. Um, surveying and, and drainage and all, we, I think all of us together, we really round out the board well, but. Really appreciate some new, um, opinions as Matt mentioned, it's the questions. Um, I know when I started on this board, I, I was just asking questions constantly to Matt, to other members, to our, our. Previous town planner and it's, there's so much information out there, it can be overwhelming, so, um. The, all the links I sent to you and all the little short little pieces and everything, I hope they're helpful, but it does take a while to absorb all that. And as you know, with the bylaw review committee that you're on, thank you, um, it's. It gets pretty deep and technical and to Matt's point, sometimes we get stuck in the minutia. And it's really good to step out sometimes and get a good, um, aerial view of what's going on, so again, thank you for. Being part of our board.
Sure, thank you, thank you for all those, those links and background info, that has been helpful.
Okay.
And, and there's another reason why it's a five-year term, because it usually takes you about four and a half before you figure everything out, so, um. That's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna take a while before you, you know, before you feel comfortable with, with everything, but. That's the way it's set up, so.
Is anybody comfortable, I'm, still not comfortable, a lot of it, I still have to question and look everything up, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
A lot, a lot of printing out of the DEP, uh, race water management booklet. And refreshing myself on what a infiltration trench is, etc., but, Kevin, you know, like everyone else said, you know. I'm really excited to, to have another member of the board, bring a fresh perspective. And to, uh, to be able to contribute, you know, I think we've got a very strong board, as Bill mentioned. Already with the four of us in place and I'm very confident from what I've heard, from other folks, they'll be a great addition to the, to the board. Um, I would love if you, if you're willing to share, um, what your background is in terms of your, um, what you do for a day job, I know all of us. Have, uh, have tangentially related, uh, experience with what we're doing on this board, but I'd love to hear what, what you bring, cause I'm sure. It's gonna be valuable and, uh, different than all the rest of us.
Yeah, I, I think completely different, um, so I, I own a PR agency. Um, so my, my background is more in marketing and PR, um, what, what sort of got me interested in this line of work was. Uh, two years ago, we picked up a client called Co-Urbanize, um, out of Cambridge, um, if anybody's familiar with that, um. Just learning more about them and kind of the philosophy of what started the company where, um. You know, they thought for a, a, a lot of the hearings like, like we had tonight, just hearing the public sentiment. What that would drive out was largely people who were opposed to projects and the founder of that company felt like. Um, you know, I, I don't think that there's as much opposition to projects in reality as there is, uh, and we just need to do a better job of. Of finding equitable ways for the public to, to, to give their opinion, so for what they were doing, a lot of. What, what they were doing was trying to digitize it, so instead of one moment in time for people to come and give their feedback. Let's spread it out and make it more, um. Uh, more opportunities for people, if someone works two jobs, if someone has young kids, it's harder for them to do that, so i- it really, um. Opened a whole new world to me as far as, uh, zoning and sort of learning more about that, but also just the philosophy behind the company, I, I really, um. Enjoyed learning about and that kind of took me deeper into this, we ran social media for them, so there was a lot of research and, uh. Reading on my part that I had to do to find content that was appropriate for them.
Uh, uh, it's funny, you mentioned Co-Urbanize, mo- my professional job, I work as a, a owner's project management on. Uh, construction development projects and, uh, for the past number of years, I've been working on a project for Mathimco. Who used Co-Urbanize, so I get their emails, uh, in my inbox at a very consistent basis, so, uh. And also, as a side note, um, what you just mentioned in terms of that engagement with the public and, you know, there may or may not be more. Appetite for some projects than we, we typically hear, um, I, I think that makes a lot of sense and I think that. Um, there's, that expertise is gonna be really, really helpful and maybe we can have a conversation around the MBTA Communities Law. Um, just for your reference. We're in the process with that working group I mentioned earlier in the meeting of trying to come up with a. Multi-family zoning district that we essentially have been dictated by the state that we're gonna have to implement something, otherwise there's. These nebulous undefined but relatively serious consequences they define. We, we have to go to town meeting with that and I think that there probably is some appetite based on. Some of the conversations we've had with other stakeholders within the community, but. Being able to engage the public in a thoughtful manner is something that we as a group have been trying to get our arms around. And actually figure out what that process is in terms of. Explaining it, but not just doing it in a super technical boring manner that turns people off and then going up to town meeting and then having everyone be like. I don't know, this doesn't sound like a good idea and just shooting it down, so I'd love to be able to connect with you maybe. In a different form in terms of some of the, the intricacies of that, in order to try to figure out what a, what a quality way. To actually thoughtfully engage people, it's something that we've been trying to figure out and struggle in terms of, how do you make zoning enough that someone's gonna pay attention to it?
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think that might have come up on a, a bylaw review committee, um. Meeting recently where, where that topic came up to, to have several opportunities to engage the public before the town meeting, so people feel like they're. Educated enough on it, uh. To, to, to both educate them and, um, save a little bit of time at town meeting so that there isn't just. A lot of questions that are asked there, people already feel like they're sort of equipped.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's one of those things where we really struggle with it because. I mean, I don't know, I feel like I'm relatively smart and all this stuff and I feel like I'm constantly trying to catch up with the, the intricacies of the law that you can just. Fall down so many rabbit holes and trying to explain it in a thirty-second elevator pitch. Yeah, is it, is it, it's a difficult, it's a difficult concept to get your head around in terms of how you distill. All of this down in the air, so I'd love to pick your brain in terms of what, what you think and or, you know, if there's other people that. We may be able to, to loop in and, and kind of take their brains.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that, that, that's really well said, uh, you know, um, I think we want to, to. I don't know, help be an educating voice. an educating voice, a moderating voice, uh, um, a, a useful venue, uh, for the exchange of ideas that, that really can help, and, uh, so, um, I'd love to, right, as, as Jim says, and, and in other ways, you know, the, the, you know, find, find other ways to, to really, uh, move all of that communication, um, along. Um, cause, right, uh, all, all this stuff matters and all this stuff, uh, really does affect people, um, in a lot of fundamental ways. So that's great. Thank you very much for, uh, joining the board and, uh, and, uh, being a, uh, being a part of, part of all this. It's, it's wonderful. Um, uh, with the start of, of each new term, um, there is, uh, an election of a chair and vice chair, um, and, uh, yeah, so want to o- open the door for, for that consideration, so, um, we, we do have a uh, one tradition of, uh, turnover every year, just to, to keep things, uh, moving, and it's a, a good way of continuing to build bench strength, um, as we, as we move through. It's also more akin to, um, the rotation of a department chair and a uh, university, uh, academic department in some ways, I think, I think about it. So I will, I will just open, open the door there. Um, we do also have several, uh, uh, things like, you know, Jim has mentioned the MBTA communities that have, um, a really long, uh, 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 half-life in terms of, uh, process and gestation and, and development, so, um, that's something I think we're uh, want to maintain, uh, involvement in.
Well, Theo, you've done such a great job as I think, um, just like moving forward, I know we like to alternate each year. There was a time during COVID, I, I think, well, Matt, it was just three of us for a while. I stayed on as chair for an extended time, and it worked okay through the period we were in, um. I wouldn't object, Theo, to nominating you for a, a second term as chair, as you've been getting comfortable in your involvement. So I would, um, like to nominate you as, if you would accept as, uh, continuing as chair.
Thank you. I, I, I would accept it, um, uh, because we, yeah, we're, we're in sort of a, and, uh, sort of, yeah, definitely a process here and, uh, and putting things together. So thank you.
Well, I'll just throw it out there that, that I don't want it, so that helps, so. Um, I'm, I, I would also guess that maybe just by process of elimination, Kevin might not want to be chair on this first night, so, no, that eliminates a couple of people. Uh, I know Jim's busy with, um, with, yeah, the, the MBTA communities, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with, with, with Theo continuing on. If, uh, unless, unless Jim, you're really set on becoming chair, I know. Um, normally we like the, the vice chair is, is priming to move up, so.
Honestly, if, if other members feel, feel the same, you know, I'm pretty happy with the fact that I'm doing the MBTA Communities and with the vice chairmanship, and I feel like that it's doing a great job of priming me for the, the chairmanship eventually, but if people are comfortable with taking that process and delaying it a year, so we can finish up the MBTA Communities, Theo can continue doing a great job, and then we could, you know, develop our bench and revisit next year. I, I would, I would, what I would think would make a lot of sense would be if we just took what we have right now and just copy paste for both the chair and the vice chair, and I think that, that seems to be working. And, uh, if, I'm assuming Bill doesn't want to be the, the chairman again, uh, and as Matt just mentioned, I think there's quality reasons why, uh, why Theo makes a lot of sense for this year. So if other people feel as if that makes sense, then I, I propose that I would second Bill Spalding, and we can go ahead and elect Theo as chair again.
Terrific. All right, so that's, so that's the motion. Um, do we all have to vote?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, all right.
Secret ballot. I'm just kidding.
Close your eyes. All right, um, uh, Kevin York.
Yes.
All right, uh, Jim Hogan.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
Yes, Matt Lowery.
Yes.
And, um, I think I'm not allowed to vote for myself, so, um, so.
Oh, you, you, you totally are, because I would usually vote against myself, so.
Matt, I'm not kidding, he has.
Oh, yeah, all right.
I completely believe that.
Yeah, yeah, that's a tradition I respect, so I'll say no.
Plausible deniability, so you could say I didn't vote for that guy, even if it's you, so.
Right, 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 right.
That was, that was my motto, so.
Fantastic. Um, thank you. Um, I appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody's patience too, as, uh, is, it is a, a a learning curve for sure. Um, I would like to nominate Jim Hogan as vice chair.
Second.
All right. Uh, any other discussion?
Now, again, um, just kudos to Jim for, um, taking the lead on a lot of complex, um, future, what we have a lot going on, and, and Theo, again, back to the master plan with you and Jim Hogan moving forward with, um, housing and a bunch of other things. So really appreciate your technical aspect and your eagle eye for, um, looking at all details. So I think you'd make a great continuing on as vice chair. That's my campaign pitch for you.
Fantastic. Uh, that, that is great, and I, I really, um, also will, uh, echo that, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, all of Jim's thoughtfulness about, uh, the zoning bylaw recodification too, and, uh, trying to work, uh, a really important feedback, uh, process, uh, to make sure that, that that, uh, is done, uh, efficiently and effectively. So, uh, with that, um, let's take a vote. Um, Kevin?
Yes.
All right, terrific. Um, um, Matt?
Yes.
All right, Bill?
Yes.
All right, myself, yes, and, uh, Jim, do you need plausible deniability too?
No, I'll just say yes.
All right, very good. All right. Stronger vote for vice chair. What does that mean for the future? Uh, that's, uh, that's terrific. All right. Um, thank you very much. Um, so item six on the agenda is
Now, hold on.
Wait, 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 yeah.
Hold on, Theo.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. I'm sorry.
You, you need to appoint, um, a, a bill payer and a, what, I, I think we've technically changed in our, the wording to a a technical writer instead of a secretary, but someone who doesn't have to quite author and pen completely, but reviews any letters that we might send to other boards, so.
So you're appointing
Yeah.
Theo as the, you're the chair, so I just want to say I do not mind continuing on as the bait of bill payer. If Susan's okay with that, because it's pretty much Susan.
All right. Uh, that, that would be great, um, uh, for you to be the bill payer. Um, that's great. And, um, uh, Kevin, uh, it seems that you, you have the exact skill set to, uh, to be our, our editor, um, and, and technical writer. Um, it's, uh, it's only come up a couple of times when we've needed to write, uh, uh, some letters to the, the the zoning board or, um, you know, work, working with Aaron to draft, uh, letters to the item, you know, to announce public hearings or, or other things like that, so, um, yeah, so that, that would be terrific. All right.
Sounds okay to me.
And Kevin, none of the stuff happens from scratch. We have, um, previous versions of a lot that's really close to it. And it's just, a lot of times we'll wordsmith it and pass it around, and then just make sure it's what, what it needs to be.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, you know, and there's certainly, um, you know, a lot of the, our public meetings are really, us, you know, uh, are, are about that, making sure we have common consensus and, uh, identifying what, what are critical points that we would want to make. Um, so. Excellent. All right, um, uh, thank you. Uh, item six is, uh, sort of checking back in on the zoning bylaw review committee and, and that update, um, the, um, as we all know, we are all there, uh, for the May first meeting, in which Attorney Bobrowski presented three initial draft chapters, um, uh, item one, which is sort of the purpose of the, the zoning bylaw, item five being, uh, non-conforming uses and item and chapter ten being, uh, sort of the organization around the, the planning board and, uh, our powers, uh, et cetera. Um, the, um, we had most in, uh, as you'll recall, uh, most discussion around non-conforming uses, because that's the, the one that Bobrowski was, had most fully drafted. Um, we did receive to the planning board email, um, updated Word documents after that meeting, uh, which I only forwarded to y'all, uh, this afternoon. Um, so, um, I think maybe the first thing we want to talk about really is, uh, what we understand, the flow of information to be, the timeline, and, uh, what, what process we would like to be able to, uh, review, comment, and work with other boards and make sure that, uh, our comments are getting formalized and communicated back, uh, to the bylaw review committee. Um, yeah, Jim.
So, yeah, Theo, and, and maybe this is a great, great opportunity for us to have a liaison of sorts with Kevin, uh, who sits on both boards, but I think, taking a step back, um, some of the concerns that I, I expressed, I think, other members of the board may, may have as well, is you know, when this zoning recodification was first envisioned and, and discussed and, uh, communicated to this board, it was discussed as a reorganization of existing content substantially. Um, as we've gotten into the process, and I think people have started to understand what is, um, occurring and the revisions that Attorney Bobrowski are, is proposing, which are for the record, completely appropriate, and he's a hundred percent the right guy to be doing this. But I think what this process has flushed out, especially the first listening session, that this is not just a taking in the existing content of the town zoning, it's reorganizing it and changing a number of the underlying policies and, uh, procedures associated with the town. And, and there's a number of opportunities for revisions to the zoning bylaws, which are the purview, uh, of the planning board that could materially impact the way development is managed within the town. Um, a great example of that is within the section of the non-performings, which we had the ability to review in advance of the meeting, there was a whole section where Attorney Bobrowski had taken language associated with, um, presenting to the Z B A, and had gone from, but the town's tradition done is a finding, which is a requirement for a majority or three to two vote to special permit, which is a four to one vote for a five-person board. Uh, and you know, I don't think he was intending and changing the existing town's underlying policy, but it's a great example of a number of potentially unintended consequences, or things that we as a board, in my opinion, should be, you know, understanding and, and commenting in conjunction with all the other appropriate boards, but I think it's something that we need to think about, you know, the communications that we have with the bylaw review committee, and maybe solicit some additional information from the bylaw review committee, because it doesn't appear to me as if any real process or timeline of said process has been defined of this recodification process in terms of, I know Attorney Bobrowski's gonna do a number of, uh, kind of initial edits, general overview, but what that process of the town deciding, do we change from us finding to a special permit, or do we keep the existing policy in place? You know, there's a number of decisions that the town is gonna have to provide direction to Attorney Bobrowski, and that process of, of identifying what those decisions are have to be made, and then how do we adjudicate those individual decisions? Through the entirety of the bylaw, it's, it's a lot of work and a lot of thoughtful consideration needs to be done, because the entirety of this is gonna be proposed to the town as one warrant, to my understanding. So it's, it's a mechanism where, and I don't think anyone's doing anything nefarious, but there's a lot of stuff that could be done with very, very little oversight, unless there's a thoughtful process that's defined, and to, today, I haven't really seen any process defined such that we could have that feedback loop between the bylaw review committee, planning board, Z B A, CONCOM, you name whatever relevant body, but we as a planning board, as the body who's gonna have to have a public hearing on this and put our name behind it at the end, I think it's incumbent upon us to, to have some of those conversations. And I think that there, there's a lot of opportunity for us to, to do good, and maybe update this in a manner that would make you know, the, the adjudication of the bylaws more rational, but I think we, I think the conversation that I think Mr. Chairperson's identified is, I think that that's, that process, or lack thereof, is a major concern from my perspective, and I think it's something that we probably need to have some sort of meeting with Chairperson Lieber, or maybe Kevin, you can speak to, if I'm completely missing the boat, and there's some process that is completely unbeknownst to us, but I think from a, from a, from this recodification process, that's, that's, you know, without talking about any of the individual details, that's kind of fundamentally the, the concern that I had this time.
There is no process. Not in the formalized way that you're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so, what, what do we think what could be a good process? And we don't, we don't need to take a, a lot of time tonight. I, I do think, uh, we are very interested in having, uh, some continuing discussions, um, with, with Dan, and I, you know, Aaron has a really good idea for some form of uh, a working group that, uh, could help sort of fill in some of these gaps, but, um, I think we need to think through it. Kevin would love your thoughts, um.
Yeah, I, I think Dan is letting Attorney Bobrowski especially drive that section of it, so we feel like we want to be a little bit more in the driver's seat. I think some kind of working group would make sense, where maybe instead of sitting back and waiting for him to come to us, his proposal, uh, we want more, more involved in that, because it, it seems to me, based on the, the two meetings that we've had with him, it's, um, this is no, no slide on him. He obviously is the, the expert in this field, but it's, it's sort of a, um, this is what's worked in other communities, so I'm gonna try to get it to work here, and I, I, I think Jim, you noticed in the last meeting, um, there was even a different town name on the, uh, the document that he shared with us.
Uh, you know, I, I don't want to speak for anyone else on the board, but I think baseline, a process that makes a lot of sense to me, if it were agreed upon and implemented, would be essentially what we've done to date, all is rational, right? Attorney Bobrowski goes, he takes the first stab. He has that presentation where we go through it. Hopefully, the next time we can all see it before for section one and section ten. So we're not trying to read it on the screen while he's going through it, but he has kind of, he does his first pass. He has a presentation to all the relevant groups, and then at that point, I think that's where the process that I'm envisioning that's missing is, as we identify, as Attorney Bobrowski's described, a sushi menu of things that need to be, uh, you know, decided. That decision-making process, I don't think Attorney Bobrowski even frankly needs to be part of that. I think that's an internal town process. So whether that's a working group where there's representatives of the planning board that represents, you know, who can talk about, you know, what our interests are, or the Z B A, or whether there's some sort of meeting, or whatever that, that, that process is, but actually identifying like, what are, you know, the pros and cons of staying with a special permit, or or staying with a finding or special permit, or pros and, you know, whatever, there's gonna be a million of those decisions. And that's the process where Attorney Bobrowski does his thing. We have a decision-making process, we feed him the output of that decision-making process, and then he rolls it back into the bylaws. That's, that's the missing link, in my opinion, and I think that's where I'd be interested in hearing what other people think in terms of what makes sense, and, and frankly, who decides, you know, if there's a disagreement, this should be a special permit, this should be a finding. You know, what, is there a body that votes? Is it just, you know, whatever one person says? You know, what is there a body that votes? Is it just, you know, whatever one person says, you know what I mean? Like, I I it's it's pretty murky, but I don't think anything that's been done is inappropriate, and I think it kind of makes a lot of sense. It's just, I think step one is defined and step two, three, four, five aren't.
Well, uh, I I think basically we we bought a service at this point. Let him roll out what he, you know, his document. Yes, it would be nice to get ahead of time so we could take a look at it. Let him explain why he believes this might be the best. We'll digest it and and make comments. I I I I sense that he didn't like hearing in real time comments and you, you know, he got a little testy on certain things, so fine, make your presentation, tell us why you think this is good. We'll go through that and then kind of rewrite it. Yes, how how that's going to happen, that that's the missing link here. But um, I I think trying to edit in real time with him is is going to be futile, so we'll we'll have him do his rollout, his presentation, explain, you know, we can have some some comments, we, you know, why would you do it this way instead of this way? But saying rewrite it at this point. Uh, I know he doesn't care for that, so we'll take it from there and then. And so perhaps he rolls out a couple of sections and then there's a few meetings where we go over it. He rolls out a few more sections and then again goes back and forth. I think that might be the most efficient way. Um, obviously, the bylaw review committee needs to buy in it on it because they're the ones you know, running this this portion of 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 this train down this track, so.
And maybe as far as that um the 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 decision on decision on who makes the decision, I guess, um, would be something to talk about with Dan. Um, he very much wants to lean on the subject matter experts in town um rather than having bylaw review committee make final decisions on those things. So I think he not only is open to it, I think he wants participation from planning boards, ZBA, et cetera, um, especially on the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, as I said, I don't think anyone's done anything nefarious or anything of that. I think it's just, I think we need to maybe be thoughtful in terms of how we're how we provide that feedback. And I agree wholeheartedly with uh Matt, that I think Attorney Bobrowski, we we've kind of paid for a service and might as well get it and then get the first copy, so then we can go through and identify all the decisions that are going to have to be made after the fact. I think it's just that decision-making linkage, and I think unless other people disagree, I think it's the matter. I think someone needs to talk to to Dan and start that conversation in terms of what his, how he envisions it, because I'm sure he's got something in his head.
Yeah, I I all this feedback is really good. Um, unfortunately, on the May first meeting, I was in and out with um being at some games and bad reception, but um from the two meetings, a couple of things I want to see if we can be clear with, what is our board's part? Like, what are we doing during these meetings and being part of it? Um, I'm not sure I'm on board with us just meddling in the whole thing, and I'm using meddling on purpose because I don't want us to slow down the process or be um nitpicky, but I also like who is overseeing this in a in a bigger picture way? So thinking about Dan's role and the committee um that convenes every five years to review the bylaws and make sure general bylaws, zoning bylaws, everything is just in tune. Um, I think the issue I've seen in the last, I don't know, fifteen years that I've been working with and close with the building department on architectural projects in town and now with the board for the last whatever nine or ten years. The discrepancy or the issue of one part of the bylaw is saying this, another part of the bylaw is contradicting that, or there's pieces in there that we've run into and and Jim's pointed them out too um with housing and how it's defined, so. Is our job as a board to circle certain sections that we want them to really look at? Because we've seen over the years that here's where we get caught and we don't know how to interpret them because there's it's a little too vague in places. So I don't know, what is our board's intention? And I know we have, um, well, Kevin, you're here now, but um having liaisons to that board being part of it, are we expected to edit comments? I know timing wasn't good and and then send them to the bylaw review committee? Or be present to explain them and defend them. Um, like Matt mentioned, and it's pretty obvious there's no way we can have meetings where things are being edited live. That was just torturous. Uh, it really was. Um, I thank you, Attorney McGrail, for being present, but going back to that whole um side of it, it's like he has so much to offer, but is he the only person that we want to hear from at that level at that side? Uh, it it could be dangerous for the bylaws moving forward if we hear from one attorney, um, town attorney. Uh, wha- what what do we need to do about that? Is it something, you know, I had a lot of notes on this that I took um between the meetings. And I I think the biggest, the biggest thing for me for this committee would be to make sure the bylaws are they represent each other where there's no conflict within. I think that would be the number one thing that I would be concerned with. And then the bigger sections that we do have to look at and deal with, to me, that's what uh Bobrowski can really help with. These, there's a lot of good and the bylaws are really good, but there's sections that are just really tough, so just focusing on those, because I don't, I don't know how quick that fifty thousand dollars is going to go. And then there's going to be ad serves for what another ten or twenty grand? I don't know. So that that's my opinion on, so the biggest part would be is I'd like to figure out what our board's part is. Um, are we the overseeing part of this? Are we the editing part? Can we um take the bylaws and focus on a few sections and make sure those are covered? So I I just want to throw that all out.
Um, I would, I would also uh uh add Aaron's comment that in, you know, building off uh uh the departments have a lot of feedback to give as well. Um, so really, you know, that, you know, they're, you know, really important subject matter, matter experts, so we need to uh fold their their expertise into the conversation too. I um, I one, one thing that comes to mind uh would be, um, we received Bobrowski's uh uh next set of edits. Um, we use a a couple of our planning meetings uh uh to have to vet them and, you know, and we want to invite various people to come uh to them. Is that uh, I mean, that that would be a start. Um, the uh, the alternative would be, uh, or in addition would be an informal working group.
I think, I think, Theo, a- and I don't want to speak for other members of the board, but I think what I am perceiving is, I think the next step is we've got to talk to Dan about what he wants as part of this process. And at some point, we also probably need to get our heads around, I think what Bill just put his finger on is what we're, what level do we want to be involved in? That may be different for different people on the board, but um, you know, I think that those, I think, I think just you know, kind of like how we talked about the working group for the MBTA process for like a year before we convened it, we need to have that talking about, talking about process for the for the bylaw review.
Okay.
What what is that? What does that process look like? And and Dan's the key guy, right? Because he seems to be, I mean, Kevin, unless you tell me wrong, he's he's the guy, right? He's the one who's kind of in charge, so he's the person we need to have that conversation with of like, hey, Dan, how do you envision this process working? Because you know, we can sit here and pontificate it as long as we want, until we have an honest conversation with him. It's kind of spinning, wheel spinning.
Yeah. Yeah, he's the person we should talk to.
Okay. Yeah. I I wouldn't, wouldn't want to be too hesitant to start, you know, spending our meetings um editing the bylaw reviews documents. So I I I don't, I didn't really sign up for that. And I think we have other things to focus on. Excuse me, than, you know, doing their work for them. No offense, but, you know, we can amongst ourselves, we can go through it and make some comments and maybe quickly, what do you think of this? And then send them you know, a draft of what we would like to see, whether they take that advice or not, that's fine, but I don't want to have a public meeting and or, you know, solicit comments from other people at this point, because I think it's that's their show to do that.
Okay. Um, so uh I did reach out to Dan. Um, I have not connected. Uh, but uh, but I will um. And and uh, you know, part of, part of the the ask uh is to get his initial thoughts and I I think it might be uh really beneficial to have a call with Dan, uh Jim, Aaron and myself and, you know. Uh, and then then we can, we can check back with with everybody.
I agree with that, but you just can't include Kevin anymore.
Yeah. Right, right, because then it's, then we've got our
Violation of open meeting laws.
Yeah, yeah. So um, I I do um uh as an aside, um, uh, being on an elected board is a lot of work. Um, and Kevin, I don't want you to feel in any way uh pressured or coerced to to continue to serve on both. Um, I, you know, it's a, it's really up to you. Um.
But my original plan was to come off of bylaw review committee. But it's probably helpful to serve as a liaison from planning board to it in some capacity.
Yeah.
So kind of TBD now.
Yeah, okay. Um. Uh, I I think that's, that's uh very considerate and and very fair and um I I do think that um yeah, you you may not need to be a voting, a voting member uh of the bylaw review committee, and that's, that is something I think, you know, we've, we're all going to want to 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 be a part of, so, you know, we'll we'll continue to have, you know, you and a forum of the the rest of us at those meetings, um, you know, as as schedules allow, so. Um, but yeah, yeah, want to respect uh your, your time and attention and energy too. Okay, um. So uh um uh, I can, uh, we'll be able to report back before the next meeting. Where where things stand and uh and and check back um at on May twenty-third, um, where where we're, where we're going. Um. The on June fifth is the bylaw review committee's next meeting, and I think it's expected that Bobrowski is going to be uh proposing uh some edits to the use table, so that that would be the net, the next big thing. Um, so um, which would give us uh yes, um time to to pick that up as well. Um. Okay, um. Any other uh comments about uh talking about, talking about and uh how we might want to um organize things? Okay. Uh, I will also, um, I'm looking at my notes back at the March twenty-second meeting, we did develop a list of uh some of our key priorities um uh in the in the zoning code, so I'll circulate that again. Um. So um, and that that may just be good food for thought too. So. So uh perhaps it was a good Freudian slip not to put in uh items not anticipated by the chair. We don't have a an agenda item for it, so um. Uh, yeah, Bill.
I I I believe I do need to make a comment that, you know, town meeting is on Monday.
Yes, thank you.
We will not be meeting um before that, so um even though it's not on the agenda, I would like to um make sure the board is comfortable with me standing at the podium and presenting or answering any questions that come up regarding the street um name change bylaw, which I believe is article nineteen?
Nineteen.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I think it's the last, it might be the last one.
Yeah.
So if it happens on Monday evening, um I don't know, hopefully it does.
Yeah, back on wood.
So is the board um in favor and comfortable with me being the person to present? Uh, Theo, I believe you won't be there. Is that correct?
Uh, I should be able to be there on Monday, the fifteenth, but probably not the rest of the week.
Okay, then that's okay.
Yeah, no, so, and um I'm very comfortable and uh we had, when we had talked about it previously, um, uh, you you had done so much research and did so much work sort of coalescing all of our, all of our work and and helping to get it drafted. Um, I think that'd be very, very uh
Right, there was a lot of back and forth. Um, I'm going to have to read the warrant to see what the latest it's on. Um, but I know it was a lot of back and forth and um Town Council Tom Allen was super helpful. And I know now that the bylaw review committee had a chance to review it, that's also helpful too, as it fits into the the format that they're looking for, so.
Right, right.
Strongly in favor and support of that proposed next with Bill.
Thanks. Well, I just don't want our town clerk, Betsy, to stand up and say, but I said eight hundred dollars. Because that's what she said it would cost to anyway, right? Uh, she's funny. Um, I'm just a side note, Kevin, did you get a chance to raise your right hand with Betsy or was it someone else?
With someone else.
Okay, all right. So if you, if you haven't had a chance to meet Betsy, she's, she's wonderful.
Yeah.
I I have her. She's great.
All right.
Fantastic.
That's all I have. I know I could do a Safe Streets, but if anybody's interested in um an update on what we're doing for Safe Streets uh working group. Um, and Kevin, which is not a Wakefield Town um sanctions committee or anything, but a bunch of years ago, I started uh with a couple of other people, Wakefield um Safe Streets Working Group, so uh we just reviewed the um bike ped plan that Aaron and the MAPC put together after many years and many things that we've been doing from the rail trail to envision Wakefield to the latest updates with like on Albion Street and stuff, so. Yeah, let me know if anybody has any questions about that on the side.
Wonderful. Any other uh final comments?
Yeah, uh, I have a few. Um, I saw the decision for the vote was made um by the ZBA. I didn't follow along to see if they actually received engineering plans and if engineering received engineering plans, if anything was reviewed, but I know their decision uh referenced a bunch of plans that, of course, weren't part of the decision, so it's still driving me crazy that half the stuff is, well, most of the stuff in the ZBAs is all pick copies uh refers to plans that don't know where to go find them, they aren't on file, so um, you know, trying to make sure these things get built according to plan are are pretty difficult when you don't have the plan, so. I'm going to keep hammering that, you know, digital copies of everything need to be out there. See why the planning board has them recorded, so people can find them because keeping everything up in the open and letting everyone see what's going on and commenting and and drawing an alarm if something doesn't look right is is the way things uh really should be done. Um, and on on a, another note, a towns member brought up uh something with the Baptist church that some of the trees a towns member brought up uh something with the Baptist church that some of the trees uh were removed. I would have liked to go back and review to see if they were actually supposed to be removed or not, if it was part of the plan. But that was all paper copies and I don't hold on to that stuff, so. You know, I don't know, I I have to assume that they were part of the plan to be removed. I have to admit that when we reviewed it, I did not pick up on things like that. Um, truthfully, we had the cradle church there that had some beautiful trees. I don't understand how you can build a smaller church and not maintain some of the uh sites history with with the plantings out there, but they're basically stripped that site clean at this point. So, so again, um if we had the documents, I could go back and review them and see if we missed something and and if the board did miss something. I think we need to look a little closer perhaps in some of these ZDA plans and and just maybe look at some more of the finer details of things that really affect people. Um, like we focused on tonight, some trees that all the neighbors were keyed in on, we were keyed in on, we're going to make sure they're protected. We don't always look at things like that. Uh, and part of the problem is that also we get, you know, reduced size copies of plans, it's hard to see things. It's frustrating, if we even get plans. They're reduced size and then sometimes they're incomplete, the actual revised plans for the decision, we never see them, most people never see them. I don't even know if the board sees full size or digital copies of them, to tell you the truth, so. Uh, the whole process in this town really needs to be tightened up. It it is frustrating that um as we know, there's three professionals on here, we deal with this stuff every single day, we know everything that we do turns into something digital as soon as we sign it or or print it out. Create it, so there's no excuse for for it not to come into this town and be digital, so. That's just, again, what I've been commenting on for a while, I'll keep commenting on it as we go, or something changes.
Thank you, and thank you for continuing to um be the voice. I just thank you, and I really appreciate that message too. All right, um with with no other business before us, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you, Matt.
Second.
All right. Well, all right, uh all in favor? Uh, Kevin York?
Yes.
All right, Jim Hogan?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
Bill Spalding?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so uh thank you, everybody. Um, this is uh uh a very needy meeting, so um I appreciate uh everyone's time and attention. All right.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Aaron. All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.